Ding everyone, tonight is Monday, November 18th at 7:00 PM. This is London Derry Town Council meeting, please rise for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You can please remain standing, Vice Chair Combs had asked if he could present the moment of silence.
Yes, thank you. With next week being Thanksgiving, I just wanted everyone to take a moment to think about all of those who may not have a place to go for Thanksgiving, a warm meal to have, and family members to be around.
Alright, so just a couple things before we go into public comment. Actually, I'll save that for before we start the budget workshop. Ah, no, I'll say it now, actually. So I know that there is, I fielded, I'm sure everyone on up here on the dice has fielded, as well as town staff, a bunch of calls regarding budget workshops, budget things that were said, you know, 2,000, additional $2,000 on the, on a $500,000 house and such. So, I'm just gonna say this, one of five. My personal feelings, so let's rewind a little bit to November 2nd. So the department heads and the finance department was directed to present things that would be nice to have in an actual budget. Me personally, I can't afford an additional 2,000 or however much on my taxes. Your checkbook is not my checkbook. I'll say that again, your checkbook is not our checkbook. And there is no right to go in there and freely grab everything that's in there and keep on taking. No one has proposed that. And I just kinda wanna set the record straight a little bit specifically on that. So, the department heads had talked about things they need and things they'd like to have. And what I'd like to hear a little bit more from those department heads is, here's a plan, you know, these are things that I'd like to get to, here's a plan, you know, to incrementally and phase that in. I'm, I'll tell you right now, I'm not for, for a significant increase. Do we need, should there be an increase? Yeah, that's why we go through this, not yeah, but this budget process is going to educate us, the public, the department heads, and everybody else on what those needs are. I think our, our professionals that run this town do a phenomenal job at the things they do, and the services we receive are phenomenal. And with that, I'll open up public comment.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Richard Blonsky, 89 Hall Road, and I'm sure you knew this was coming, and I wanna talk about the light situation in the common. What was disturbing to me, on top of spending the 15,000, is how the money was appropriated. As far as I'm concerned, it was illegally appropriated. You have a purchasing policy, it specifically spells out what you have to do, you didn't do it. You didn't send it out for bid, it's over 10,000, so there was no bid process. You can get around the bid process if you send it out as part of a state bid, like if you were doing police cruises and the state was, you could package it with them. There is a provision on page six, section five, number K, with the town manager, can bypass it. The intent of that was, if you had a problem, like a storm blew the roof off the town hall, it's not for lights, and quite frankly, your town manager's not around anyway. So that's a problem. So where are you gonna get the money? Cause you certainly shouldn't be spending that money. It has to come out of two line items, because you don't have enough in one to cover it. Why do we not follow the purchasing policy? We should be, the council should be leading, showing people how it's done. I know that was the intent on the, on the town manager part, because when I was town treasurer in 2001, there was no purchasing policy. It's one of the first things I asked for when I came into office. And if you looked, it was adopted in 2002. Is it perfect? Maybe not, but it is what it is. Alright? The other problem I have with this, apparently we've entered into a one-year lease. So for 15 grand, we own nothing, the way I'm looking at this. I just got this, I haven't had a chance to read the whole thing. The agreement date was originally September 11th, September 11th. It was signed on November 15th. Most contracts have a three-day right of rescission, you should rescind this. There is a business in this town, and he may speak for himself, he's here, who has volunteered to put the lights up, at no cost to the town. Somebody that's done other stuff for the town on his own dime. And we should take advantage of that. Find the money to buy the lights, cause I don't think that person should have to buy the lights. Alright, but that's not gonna be where you have to send it out. You need to start following procedures. I know you guys hate me there, hate me coming and bringing this up, and I don't care. Follow the procedures. The fact that one of the council members made a kinda joke out of it, you know, who's gonna be the Grinch, that was unprofessional. There are people in this town who cannot afford anything extra. I know, I wrote assistance checks when I was the town treasurer, and that was 20 years ago. Times are tougher and things haven't changed. I know I don't always act the most professional, but I'm not sitting up there, maybe I will be to come this much, cause I'm to the point where I've had enough of this garbage. You need to take up, when we have people in this town that are willing to do stuff, you need to take them up on it. So I wanna know, you guys just gonna ignore the fact you didn't follow procedure and spend this money anyway? Are you gonna look into getting out of this contract? It was signed on Friday, Monday was a holiday, so you're only into day two. You have tomorrow, get out of this contract. Have the attorney look at it. I would've never signed this contract the way it's written. So, that's what I have. I got a list of 42 things that are going on in this town that I've seen, and I think I'm gonna have to come at every meeting and bring one of them up, until things get done. I've said for years, that you wait for the, for, somebody brings something up, you wait a couple weeks for it to go away. You ask for answers, you don't get it. And last week, ex-councilor Butler was complaining he's not getting the answers. Gee, he was one of the ones not giving the answers. Become professional, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. Daniel Bouchard, 8 O'Connell Drive. One issue is about these lights. You know, I wanna thank Ron for not voting for that, because I know that this is a perfect opportunity for the community to get involved. Yeah, we had trees like, you know, on the ground before, I thought maybe one opportunity would be nice to have trees again. You could get people to donate trees, you could have schools, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, all kinds of different sports teams, you know, decorate a tree, which would be nice, you know? It'd be a community event. And I, I've been told, well, can't do a lot of that stuff because of liability. I just wanna refresh your memories a little bit. The rec department came to you guys about getting some mulch spread at the playground. And the council was like, let's get the community involved. And I was like, wow, this is great, community involvement, right? And there was a lot of mulch there, alright? Somebody donated their time, okay, to go up there and, and move all that mulch. There was no liability question at the time. All volunteers were up there, spreading the mulch, there was no, geez, you know, what about the liability? It's hot out there, what if somebody, you know, passes out and stuff? So, I, I think you need to revisit this whole light issue. I think there's people in the community that would've done it, and you wouldn't have had to go out and spend the money, you know? My other quest, thing is on the budget, and Chad, you've addressed this? No, people can't afford that big increase. Can't, personally, I'd be looking at a $14,000 increase in my taxes for this town, and I can't do that. You know, I'd have to pass that on to other people, which is not fair. So, you know, I watched the budget process, and I know when people say, oh, I could use extra people, you know? I'd like to see the town, and I've asked this, how many vacant positions do we have? How many vacant positions did we run last year? How many vacant positions are we running now? If a department comes into you and says, I want three people, and they've been fully staffed for a couple years, I could just, I could understand that. But don't come asking for people when you're not fully staffed, okay? All that is to me, is you're padding the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening, sir.
Dennis Martin, 182 Pillsbury Road, London Derry, New Hampshire. You know, I don't know how many people in this room have been in a communist country, but I have. And the way a communist country works, is they raise taxes. And after a while, they take things from you. I heard there was gonna be that raise of tax of seventeen half, seventeen and a half percent to 25%? Is that correct? And, and I didn't know it was gonna be $2,000, I heard it was 1,500 to $2,000. That's gotta stop. We are not a rich community. I don't know why anybody would ever say that we're a rich community. And even if we are, why do we have to take money from the rich people? If the taxes go up the way they're gonna go up, at seventeen and a half to 25%, I don't know if I can live in this community anymore. I'm on a fixed income. I'm a disabled veteran living on a fixed income. I cannot afford the taxes that you guys keep, keep pushing on people. And I'm not the only one in this, in this situation. I don't know why people think London Derry's rich. We have a lot of big houses around, that doesn't mean everybody's rich. That's gotta stop. It has to stop. Or you're gonna be, people who can't afford here are gonna have to leave, or they're gonna lose their homes. And that's where the money grab comes in, cause they can't pay the taxes, so the town comes in and grabs their property. That's communism. That's communism. I've lived in a communist country, and I've lived in a dictatorship too. You have to start listening to the people of London Derry that vote. And I'll tell you right now, in two years, I plan on running for the town council. And I'll win, because I'll go to every door in this neighborhood and tell them what I'm about, I'm about saving you from paying high taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening, sir.
How you doing? Eric Turcot, 28 PVD Row, here on the Christmas lights. First of all, my business, I am so grateful for this town and what it's given me. I always jump to give back to this community, and the Christmas lights, after seeing and hearing about it all, that's nothing for me to do. I can do this and donate, I wanna know what we can do to change this. Thirty minutes ago, I put a Facebook post out asking for donations and people to help, there's hundreds, in 30 minutes. Why can't we go that route and, and get away from this spending? Cause I, I think it's just wasteful, especially to not own the lights, they're only for one year, so 15 grand, we could go, the amount of lights we could buy for that amount of money. And I could donate, the townspeople could donate, and we could have that place lit up like, like it'd be unbelievable. But, I wanna know how we can stop this, cause from my understanding and quick reading on the contract, is we have till tomorrow to, to squash it. And then, there's no fees, there's no fines, there's no nothing. I wanna know what I can do, what I need to do, when I need to do it, and I'm gonna rally the rest of the town to come in and help.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Good evening.
Kathy Wagner, Town Treasurer. Couple things, I was a little disappointed that I wasn't made aware, as due to Mike Malaguti's resignation, that I have taken over the sign-off of expenditures coming out of the town manager's budget. I also would like to know, Justin, if we do go the donation route, and we do have Mr. Turcot put up the lights and what everybody's talking about, how does this work?
If it's what I'd like to do?
No, I'm addressing Justin, cause he's finance.
Right. What I'd like to do is hear everybody's input, I'm sure there's gonna be some other people regarding this.
I know that Chad, but we also need to know what would transpire if we went this route, because personally, I have no problem with that, if that's what is decided. And I have no problem with signing the contract tomorrow, if that's what's decided. But I think we also need to know, can we accept these donations?
So what I'm, what I'm saying is...
She's the elected town treasurer and the fiduciary, she's allowed to have standing.
I need to know how we record this, and how this is completed. I have no problem with this at all, I think it's a wonderful idea. But I can't have $5 coming in from Tommy Joe, and I can't have $5 coming in from Cindy Lou Who, and not be able to tell the auditors that.
So I wasn't trying to mute you, so I just wanna make sure of that. I was just trying to allow other people from the community and then have...
Well, I'm part of the community, Chad, I live here too.
Right, and I, and I was corrected regarding, you know...
And it's my job to protect this community, because you see, as the treasurer, I might not have a lot of authority, but I have a lot of liability. And if something goes wrong, it's on my back. So I just wanna know, Justin, how do we do this?
In terms of the monetary, we would have to track every donation that we received, whether it was $5 from Jimmy, or $1,000 from XYZ Corporation. Depending on the dollar threshold that's received, if it's above 10,000, we'd need a public hearing in order to formally accept it. Otherwise, we'd be able to accept it through a regular town council meeting. The services provided by Mr. Turcot, correct?
Yes, sir.
We would also have to accept as well, and get a rough estimate of what that would be, but it wouldn't be a, it would be a donation in kind, rather than a monetary donation.
And how would we, would, how would we establish, and Chad, this is very important for the community, because if they wanna donate, they know the, need to know the correct procedure to do that. Justin, how would we go about? Would they go to the town clerk? Would they go to you?
I would...
I would suggest we do not accept credit cards, because at this point, it would be too complicated with fees and all that other stuff. It would be not, just a clear donation coming down, and people could do it just like we did with the old home day, it was kept tracked on worksheets, as who gave it, what their check number is, and what the amount.
Can I ask a question real quick? Just, could, could people donate to the individual that wants to do the installation, and then he make one donation?
I'm not gonna tell people how to donate.
Fair.
What I can tell you is, we've done this in the past with the sensory playground, in which I've worked with the individual, and there was, both situations occurred, where people felt more comfortable sending it to the town, and we acted as a fiduciary in that regards. Or she would do various events and fundraising situations.
We don't have time for events.
And she would collect it on their behalf, and then turn it over to the town.
Okay, so, I guess then, we're at an impasse, but I would like, probably before the end of this discussion, to be able to give clear directions to the citizens of this community the appropriate way to donate. And I don't think the, the whole burden should be on Mr. Turcock and his books, if the town is donating. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Good evening.
Tom Esty, Old Nashville Road. So I spoke to Chad, and I also spoke to Wally, and I was the one who brought this to light with Eric, and I asked him to go with me to do this together. I was gonna buy the lights, donate them, and he was gonna put them up. That's pretty cut and dry and simple. He's got the insurance, he's got the equipment. If, you know, Dave's worried about the sprinkler heads or whatever, just show us where the sprinkler heads are, we won't run over them or whatever, and do it that way. I've talked to other towns, their DPW, they put them up. I, I, you know, I don't know why we can't do it, but so be it. Like I said, I donate the lights and Eric would put them up, so. So I'd pay for them.
Yeah, we would just have to accept the lights, which we do that.
So the only thing I would need to know from Wally is how many strands of lights? So I would assume that the ones that are on the tree were probably bought at Home Depot?
I would assume that as well. I know that...
986 feet is what they were quoted.
Nine, so that's basically, so say 10 boxes.
Correct.
So that's, 65 bucks a box, that's 650 bucks. So, I can buy 10 boxes and be done with it.
So, per tree, so double that, double that, that was per tree.
Per tree. Okay, so 20 boxes.
Not sure, yes, you can? I'm not sure what you're looking for.
Yeah, yeah, I can, but I mean, but don't get me wrong, if someone wants to, you know, buy a few boxes, I'm not gonna say no, but I just brought this to light.
Yep, I'm just, under RSA 3195, we have to accept donations like this?
Yep.
That shouldn't be the cause not to.
Yep. But when I ever heard, when it started out at 11 grand, and then it went up to 15, I'm like, do you know how many struggling people there are in this town just for food, and we're gonna spend 15 grand on lights? That was the most asinine thing I've ever heard of in my life.
With, with all due respect, did you watch the meeting?
Tom.
What's that?
Did you watch the meeting?
Tom.
Cause at that meeting, I said it was not a top priority for me.
Oh, yeah, I'm not blaming you. No, I'm, no, no, no.
It just looks like you are right now.
No, 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 no. No, I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying, to spend that much money is just...
Tom.
What?
Just focus it on me.
What?
Focus it on me. Can you focus your comments towards me, please?
So, um, so, so that's pretty much it. When I heard the price, I just couldn't believe that's what we would spend. So, and that's when I called you, and that's when I called Wally.
Thank you for yours and Mr. Turcot's holiday spirit.
Yep, alright.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi. Representative Christine Perez. I'm speaking as a representative tonight, on two things. The second thing I was gonna say after, but I'm gonna say it first.
After, sir.
Oh, Christine Perez, Representative Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive, London, New Erie, New Hampshire. I was gonna, this was my second comment, but I'm gonna make it first since we're talking money. On November 12th of this year, Governor Chris Sununu has told state agency heads to submit proposed budgets with at least a 4% cut in the first year of the two-year budget cycle, starting on July 1st. Quote, "We gave them individual targets, asked them to present about a 4% reduction." End of quote. Quote, "I remind folks that we have double-digit spending increases, we were looking at state employee vacancies as well. Let's look at those today's needs and reduce it by about 4%. As lawmakers craft a budget, the expiration of COVID-19 relief funding, which allowed New Hampshire to disperse billions of dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act, Plan Act and the CARES Act, means some programs will need to sunset," Sununu said. "We are still looking at the current budget with heavy surplus," Sununu said, "but the realities of inflation, the realities of cost of living, as much as they're hitting all of our families and businesses across the state, it hits government too." I just wanted you all to be aware of that statement that came out on the 12th.
Thank you.
Also, as your state rep, when I was here at the last meeting and talked about the voting, I wasn't complaining or saying anything bad about it. It went great, the weather was perfect. But a statement was made, and I've had multiple people since last Tuesday say to me, "I'm not voting again if I have to wait in those lines." So, I met with Secretary of State Scanlon concerning voter polling and place laws, after I was told that you can't just do it, and you can't change the times. Prior to this meeting with Secretary Scanlon, I examined the London Derry Town Charter concerning voter places and hours. 5.4E in the charter says, "Voters at the official ballot session shall follow the procedures set forth in state law, including all requirements pertaining to absentee voting, polling places, and polling hours." 2.2 states, moderator, "There shall be a moderator of the town who shall have all powers and duties granted by the charter and state law." If we went to multiple polling places, it is my understanding that the moderator can appoint assistant moderators at those polling agencies. 2.5D, "The council shall specify the places of the town, the places, the polling places of the town." And 2.5B, that was D, "States, all town elections, the polls shall be open not less than 11 hours." But it specifically says that they can't start any later, or they can't end any later, but they can be adjusted. So, based on that, I met with Secretary Scanlon, and we looked at the current law that is in place, and that current law is from 1979. It is 65910, in towns. "If any town shall so vote, the selectmen shall provide one or more additional polling places in such towns shall give notice to affected." So in other words, the law now states that the town has to vote to have an additional polling place. But, with Secretary Scanlon's help, he actually wrote the words for me to submit, and today I submitted to the Office of Legislative Services for drafting, I submitted to change that law to, "The selectmen may provide one or more additional polling places in such town, and shall give notice to all affected voters at least 30 days before the election, at which the additional polling places will be in effect. The selectmen shall determine the boundaries of the voting district to be served by each addition, such additional polling places." I have no doubt that this will probably pass because of Secretary Scanlon's wording, and the fact that he intends to come and speak in favor of it. I also have multiple other representatives who are from large towns who are in favor of this will also come to speak with it. I believe that the town would have the opportunity, if they needed to, to rent additional voting machines, and also polling pads as needed, and that the moderator would have the authority to appoint assistant moderators to work additional sites. This would allow, would be good for the residents, it's not, it's not a, it's a may, not a shall, you don't have to do this, but it would give the town council the opportunity if passed. So basically, if you wanted one polling place for the town elections, you could do that. But if you were dealing with federal elections or state elections, you would have the opportunity or the ability to, to offer more. Any questions?
No, thank you.
No? Any question? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy Wagner, 15 Parthener Drive, 12 McGregor Court. If Christine's, or state rep, or whatever you are tonight, wants to be on the ballot, or whatever we're doing, I would like a monetary figure, because if we're upset over $15,000 for lights, I can't wait for the figure, for a polling station that we only need once every four years. Thank you.
Megan Donovan, 45 Chase Road.
Good evening.
Um...
I was going to talk about a little bit of things that I've been noticing. One with the voting. Like Kathy said, it's once every four years. I work across the street from the polling station with a bit of careful planning. I planned to come in to work that day at one o'clock. I was able to get to work at twelve-thirty. I planned ahead of time for the traffic. I was able to come into town, it took me about an hour and a half in traffic to vote with my mom, and then we went home, and then I came back to work. I planned that because I knew it was going to happen, that it was going to be a lot of traffic. We didn't sit still in the line, it was just really long. We seen a lot of voters. People just have to plan ahead. I don't see that we need additional polling places, especially as we're looking at saving money in the budget. So I just want to, like, as somebody who works here in the same, across the street from the facility, I did see many people turning around. I also seen those people parking and just walking because it was faster. The reality is, it's every four years, it's not such a big deal, just plan for it, and people did vote. We did have a lot of voting going on that day. Besides that, I just wanted to point out a few different things, because I know a lot of people come up and talk about how they can't afford different prices and different raising of the budget. There's just a lot of thought that goes into the department heads. I know Aaron especially, as I am the head of circulation at the Leach Library, I've worked at the library for nineteen years. I know that it's not something that comes out at the last minute, months and weeks go into this budget. And I know Aaron presented a budget that had bare minimum requirements. When presented and Kate suggested, like, what would it look like to thrive? We came up with those numbers, Aaron gave you a suggestion last week. Then there was also the thought of trimming a little down. What looks like trimming a little down to the library, I will tell you, because I've been at those meetings with the trustees, they're going to take out the furniture line. That's what they're looking at. The furniture line is two thousand five hundred dollars. That's to start replacing thirty-year-old furniture. Aaron put that in to start a rolling replacement of furniture that we're already seeing breaking. Prior to the meeting in September for the board meeting of the library trustees, we had two chairs specifically from the children's room that broke. We had one of our meeting room table chair, uh, tables break. In between September and the October meeting, we had two more chairs break in the library. Last week, we had a chair that was ripped in the children's room and kids were pulling out the stuff in one of the padded chairs. This is something that's needed, it's not a want, it's not anything extravagant, it's two thousand five hundred dollars. When you're looking at that to replace furniture, a set of tables and chairs is going to run you six thousand five hundred dollars, just at minimum. So we're under asking at the library. So I just want to say that when you are presented with budgets and people say they can't afford to have your taxes and, I, I live in this town too, I understand taxes raise, get raised to serve the town, but you can't have a thriving community if you don't have thriving departments. I don't think any of the departments are asking too much. What I'm asking is to make sure that you're looking at these budgets and knowing that they're already being presented at a bare minimum. I have been grown, I grew up in this town, I'm a fourth generation, fourth generation resident, and I've lived here for forty years, I'm forty years old. That is something that I've seen, that taxes go up, that happens, it's just the way of life. So just think carefully. I looked up earlier today in preparation for this, the community profile for Londonderry. When people say that Londonderry is a rich town, it is, it's the fourteenth highest per capita in New Hampshire, in New Hampshire. When you're looking at our demographics, our poverty level is one point six percent of the population below poverty. And this is from the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, from the state website. When you're looking at unemployment rates, the unemployment is two point three. These are low numbers, which is fabulous, I think, that we have these low numbers, but the reality is, there is, there are a lot of people in town, you can make sacrifices to help your fellow residents. If you have the, fully fund your departments, all of them, because they're all important, you'll be able to better help the neighbors who are struggling. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Now, I have something to say regarding the budget. Ladies and gentlemen, we've had meetings here over the last couple of months in which people have said that they want outstanding services, but that comes at a cost. So the department heads in this town and all of the people who are on the budget committee and everyone who's worked on the budget gave two different proposals. One is, right-size the budget, put through what we need to be able to have essential services. That was done. People went on here for comments for hours about that they wanted additional people and additional services. That comes at a cost. That was put out there as like, this is what it costs. If you want to have all these services, it's going to cost between seventeen and twenty-five percent more. No one said they're going to do it, but that's what the cost is. If you look at the national averages of tax burdens throughout the country, the, the state with the lowest tax burden is five point one percent, and that's Alaska. The second lowest is New Hampshire at five point four percent. We're good at squeezing a dollar out around here. What our impediments are is, is that healthcare for a family plan is forty-one thousand dollars, and it's going to increase to forty-five thousand dollars. It has doubled in the last ten years. This is something we provide to our employees. What's great about this community is, is that Eric Turcot called me at the last meeting and started to express his interest about this. Eric personifies what's great about Londonderry. Right? He's what everybody should be in this community. And I've seen what Eric does behind the scenes and nobody even knows about it. It would be a lot nicer if we could all get to the same page here and understand what we're trying to do here. What we're trying to do is continue to have a great community. The town side of government has about two hundred employees, and it's twenty-three percent of the total budget. Two percent of that, the additional two percent goes to the county, and the rest of it goes to education. We are an aging state. Thirty-six percent of the people who live in this state are over fifty-five years old. That's five hundred and four thousand people. So what people are coming forward and saying is, is that as we continue to age, and they say we're going to go to forty percent over the next five to six years, they're asking for different level of services. We need to continue to provide essential services, but everything comes at a cost. And Eric, you let me know when I can donate. And thank you for what you're doing.
You're helping, don't worry.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah, please.
So, we sat through two budget sessions already, and we got to hear all kinds of things, and none of this is to the people who work for the town, none of this is to the department heads that presented. Because I could see some of them not necessarily wanting to present everything they presented, they were doing what was asked of them. Aaron last week said, you know, she was just asked to come with a hundred grand, she didn't necessarily want to come up with that. If we're doing this on just information only and telling people what it costs at the state level, they're, they're doing cuts at four percent. I'd like to take the next two sessions to see what that looks like here, to see what it looks like on the other side, and that, instead of just seeing what it looks like and how much we can spend. I'd like to see the budget committee meeting on Thursday, go over that and see what would it look like if we could cut something. A lot of times, I work in private business, I see people coming up with budgets all the time, and they're like, it can't get any lower. Until you say it has to get lower, we're going to go out of business. You can find something, there's, there's always something. I've, I've looked, furniture's not the lowest line item. There's other things that can happen. Now, do you want to do that? Not necessarily. But I'm just curious what that would look like. Since we spent two whole sessions on what everything would look like to thrive and make it as good as we can get it, I'm just curious what it would look like if we did it the other way. And informationally, maybe we can find something in the middle where we're at reasonable. But to do two whole sessions, and my phone has been ringing off the hook since we started that, people don't take that as informational. They get worried, they get worried, do I have to start moving? I've literally heard that in the last couple of weeks, and I've been saying this the last two sessions. We should take a look at what it looks the other way and then present that to people informationally too. People just get a choice of, do you want to spend more on the ballot? We've never, we never seem to look at it or vote on it the other way on the ballot, so I'd just like to see that.
Alright, anyone else? Public comment is now closed.
Put your hand up higher.
Public comment is now reopened.
Dennis Martin, one eighty-two Pillsbury Road, London, New Hampshire. First, I want to say, I thought the people at the polls did a great job. I really do. And I know some of the councilmen were there.
All of the council was there.
Well, I, I saw three or four of yous there, and I didn't.
Just for clarification, Dennis, the council arrives before six AM and leaves when the last ballot goes into the vault at two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. Yep. But, you know, I heard people making complaints about, you know, how long it took to go and how they had to get in. I walked from the Lions Club over, no big deal, it was a nice day, I needed the exercise anyways. And I thought, you know, people don't realize sometimes in this country how fortunate we have to have to write the vote. My son, who served in Iraq and Afghanistan, when they first got their first choice to vote, had to sit in guard to make sure people were safe enough to come in and vote, and those people didn't walk just a mile or a block down the street, they walked pretty much across the city to get to a polling place. Okay? So if it's every four years, I have to stand in line for an hour or so, an hour and a half, or whatever, it's not a problem to me, as long as I can physically do it. Plus, I did notice in the town hall that people were doing absentee ballots too. So do that, do an absentee ballot, you know? We don't have early voting, right?
We do not.
Is that state?
statewide.
That's state, okay. So I, I, you know, either way, you could say, well, I'll take an absentee ballot, I'm going home somewhere else. But, you know, just think about that, how lucky we are to vote. You know, and, and I'm not going to take it for granted, and again, the people that worked the poll, I thought, you know, and, and logistically, could they ever really open up another poll? And can they get the help? Because most everybody's volunteers, right? I, I assume, right? Excuse me?
They get paid.
They do? They get paid?
Eight dollars and fifty cents an hour.
They get what?
Eight dollars and fifty cents an hour.
Really? Well, eight, either way, if they get paid or not, eight dollars and fifty cents an hour is, eight dollars and fifty cents an hour. But the, the fact is, is that, can you find people even to do another poll, another location? You know, logistically, this works out fine, it's been, how long have they been doing it at the school? Since beginning of the town, right? Whenever they?
So the main difference is, is we have the ability to up to six hundred spots that we can access across the street. If we move to one of the other two schools, it's less than a hundred spots.
Right.
And, you know, is, is anything possible? Anything is possible. I would like them to build a road out the back so that everybody could drive out back to Moose Hill, but you know, that probably costs more than Christmas lights. But, you know, but that would, that, if you, that would be great, if something like that happened, if someone happened to donate a road. But it's, but you're right, what it, what it takes is, is it was a hundred and thirty people inside, thirty to forty people outside, and it costs a lot of money to pull that off. And people worked hard, and they, and they're dedicated to the, you know, to making sure that everyone can get in and vote.
So you didn't get volunteers at all, everybody got paid?
Well, the people, and some of the people that alert volunteered, we all volunteered, there were volunteers.
There are individuals that opt to volunteer instead of receive a check.
Right.
A ballot was handed out every three point eight seconds.
When I heard people complaining on London, on the London area, New Hampshire, Facebook, they said, well, next time you can volunteer to help. That kind of silenced everybody, you know?
Thank you for that.
No, you know, don't complain, get involved, you know? Volunteer.
I've personally worked twenty-seven elections. Sometimes we're up for twenty-eight hours straight, and we don't, that's what it takes. And, and you know what? People are very appreciative. Everybody says thank you, and everybody was very friendly and happy in those lines, and it was, thank God it was a nice weather day.
Yeah. So real quick, I'll make a real quick comment, Councilman Combs brought up about anybody who needs, who can't, maybe not have a good Thanksgiving or get food, get ahold of me, I'll find a place for them. Alright, I will find a place for them, especially if they're a veteran. And secondly, the Friendship Center in Dairy, New Hampshire, every Thursday of Thanksgiving, they have dinner, and it's open to the public. So pass that on. Every, it's Friendship Center is on Sixth Railroad Ave, at the Friendship Center, every Thanksgiving, they have a dinner there, it's open to the public, so that's enough, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Just want to ask one thing.
Yes, sir.
A lot of people made comments about the lights, I, I just want to know, is the council going to address that tonight?
Yes.
And make a decision? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing that in public comment is closed for a second time. Alright.
Can I jump in real quick?
Please.
So, open positions as of right now, the town manager has one slash two. And the slash two is the current town manager situation. Assessing has one, but that's a contracted service that we pay, that way, should we be able to find somebody, we're able to fill that instead of have the contracted service in, but assessors are a difficult area to find. Police has six currently, not including the crossing guards, but one is in the works, so five. Fire has three, all of them are in the works, one part-time that's open. Building has one part-time, DPW has two part-time, which they were in interviews today for one of those positions, as well as the Solid Waste Center, the new additional one that we're requesting in the proposed budget, to hopefully offset the cost of overtime from the DPW guys in future years. And then Planning has one full-time. I've been meaning to email you, and I get.
Can you email me that when you get it?
Engineering.
Yes.
New business, anything else from the council you want to talk about, the Christmas lights?
I mean, are we going to talk about it at some point? Wait till we, are we, are we doing it now?
What do you want to do?
What can we do? That's, what are our options at this point?
I think we should cancel the contract.
Well, I mean.
You can do whatever you want, is the answer.
I mean, at this point, like, this is all, this is all new information to me, it may not be new information to everybody, but this, and I think it's wonderful, I think it's wonderful Mr. SD and Mr. Turcot would be willing to do that. I, I'd love the community spirit, I love what we did with the playground with the mulch, I'd love if we were able to take advantage of it, it's just, at the point where the contract is and everything else, what, we can do whatever we want, but there's real world, real world consequences on, depending on where that process was at.
Can we ask Mr. Turcot to come to the podium?
Yes, sir.
Eric, I'm trying to remember the date, it's, they have Christmas on the common, I think is the seventh or eighth of December.
Okay.
So I, I would assume that the, the common would need to be ready sometime prior to that. How, how would something like that work into your schedule?
I could start Friday. I take Fridays off for my mental and the farm and just getting all the loose ends that I need to do, and I can push that aside for the Thanksgiving week, and I could take care of it as early as Friday.
What do you need from the town to be successful?
I think just with the volunteers, like I, like I said, I put a post on Facebook an hour ago, there's hundreds of people willing to help and donate and go the extra mile, all townspeople, all town businesses, like, I don't think I need anything from the town. I need Dave Wally to show me where all the sprinkler heads are, so I don't have any issues with those.
So you need Dave Wally to be available to you when you're, when, once you start, so that you understand where everything is?
I just needed, like, they could flag them when, whenever they want, if they could, that would be the only thing I need from the town. Otherwise, I really, I'm not even worried about them, I just, that's one of the concerns that they talk about in ground protection. I have ground protection, I have all that stuff, my lift is designed to go on lawns and, you know, I've worked at your house, you, you, you don't have, you don't have ruts in your, in your lawn. have ruts in your lawn, so...
Eric, you're a very fine gentleman and a good tree guy.
Yeah. You know, and I have confidence in my equipment and all that. Like, it's a 20-foot higher lift than the one they were going to rent. It's the same design, same everything, all, you know, made for going on lawns.
And you'll trim the trees while you're there.
Yeah, I'll do that for free, too.
I was kidding. So I guess what, so, Dave, can you come up, please? I'm sorry, if it's okay, I'm just going to keep asking questions. We did this once before, somebody sent me a picture of what it looked like. I'll share that picture with you.
Yeah.
Dave, what do you need?
We're talking about lights, right? No.
No, I don't have a million dollars for you.
And I don't have any bourbon.
You don't have enough. Look, cooperation is what we need. I understand everybody's sentiments. When I was trying to inform the public and volunteers and Rotary and the board, was simply to bring to light, no pun intended, that there wasn't going to be any light down there, that we were in dire straits. The public works has a little mantra of, we'll help where we can, and this year, we cannot help. Being down the positions we're down, the dire straits that the lights that are in, we couldn't do it. All right? It's perhaps even just, I'll take blame that perhaps we shouldn't have even tipped our toes in the water here, and we shouldn't have done what we did over the last couple of years to limp us along. I'll take, I'll take the responsibility for that. But time is of the essence, and things were getting close, I was asked to get some quotes, and that's what I did.
Okay. So what do you need going forward? Is everything that Eric's saying good enough for you?
Yeah, the equipment that he has, I have, I have no, I have confidence in that. You know, I get a little worried about, you know, I'm sure it's going to be you or somebody qualified that's going to be up 40, 50 feet in the air, you know, liability does come to mind with that. But I know Eric, he has the proper insurance and all that things. He does have the same equipment that these, that they were going to use.
The town actually has it all somewhere on file.
Yeah, yeah. So, other than just a little bit of scheduling and whatnot, it's, it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. Eric, you'll be able to take the old lights down and Dave will be able to dispose of them?
Yeah.
Am I leaving anything out?
I mean...
So I'm canceling the contract.
No, I'm saying for them.
So canceling the contract, there's one day, Business Day left.
So, so I reached out to the gentleman that put the proposal together for us. When all this came to light, Eric and I talked late in the day, early evening. So I reached out to him before tonight's meeting to see if I could get some clarity upon that. He said that it shouldn't be an issue, there is some rescinding time period in there. He was going to check with corporate in the morning, but didn't see any major issue with, with canceling it. He understands, as we led into this project, I explained to him that there was going to be a little bit of turbulence here, and, you know, this would be something that we were exploring to do. And with that, he didn't see a grave issue. So.
Does that, anybody else have any questions? I'm just...
No, that's great.
I'm sorry, I just did this once before, so I knew what to ask.
Just who has to make the phone call to cancel the contract? Is that Justin or is it Kathy? Oh, you take care, okay. Thank you, Dave. Because he asked, depending upon your decision tonight, he asked that I extended him the courtesy to let him know, obviously, they're a very busy company, and so, yeah, they don't want to be going back and forth with. The project manager, not this gentleman, but the project manager contacted me today about scheduling, and they were due to get there Saturday. So you'd be beating them by a day.
I just want to say, Tom, if you could stand up too. I just want to say thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you both.
I really do, and to the community, and even, like, especially Dave, like, thank you for all the work. I know it's turbulent, I know it's not fun, but the fact that, you know, the three of you and plus the additional based off your Facebook posts, which I haven't seen, but, you know, take your word for it.
I was kind of shocked, like, just looking down while I was sitting here and just like, message people, message, I'll give you this, I'll give you this, tell me what you need.
So what we can do as well, if we get more than enough funding, we can put it as a deferred revenue, so that way it can go into next year as well and going forward, tool out, to continue on, rather than...
Put up more lights.
I like that.
It's what we did with the Century Playground and a couple other items as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right.
That seems fair.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you both. Thank you very much. Absolutely.
All right. So consensus from the council to give, authorize Dave to rescind that contract.
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Gentlemen, thank you. Justin, you got, do you need any direction? Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on, new business, Arco of Architectural Assessment Discussion. Adam Scher.
Actually, hold on, I'm thinking here, with the donations, if essentially you can let me, if you're sending money into the town, don't just send it in without any description of what it is.
So put in the memo what it's for.
Yeah, common lights or something along those lines, or they can send it to Mr. Turcot, and he can send it along. Just that way, we're not just getting random checks with out of place to put them.
All right, so just reiterate, because maybe not everyone heard that.
Yep.
If they would send in, send in a check or payment or whatever, be descriptive what it's specifically for.
Correct.
They need their name and address on it as well, or, I mean, is the...
Ideally, it would be nice to have, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I went to kindergarten there.
Adam Scher, good evening.
I'm not the madam chair, you're the chair.
Of your committee?
All the chair. I got a tough crowd tonight. Kathy Wagner, 15 perimeter. I'm here to, you guys chartered a group of citizens to come up with a way to save the Reverend Meaning Morrison House, which was formerly, most of us know it as the Lions Hall, but it is technically the Reverend Meaning Morrison House, and it has been in the community for quite some time. And it does have a historical, a very historical value to it, to this community. I mean, it was our town hall, lots of decisions that made all of us move here were made in that building, and I think the, I think she has a right to be saved. We have spent money, and I know we're going to come up with questions on why we're spending more money, but it is a unique antique, and it does need that kind of restoration power and knowledge behind it. So part of the committee's charge was to come up with a plan to save it. And what we all realized was the same thing, that conclusion that the town came to, that the most important thing is to stabilize the structure. We're not here to historically preserve it, we're here first and foremost to stabilize it. And none of us really have the capabilities or the understanding or the engineering or the requirements that would need to take this task on. So part of our decision-making process, we came up with the idea that maybe we should get another proposal from a firm that is timber freight versus Weston and Simpson is, or Stampsen. And so we reached out, and part of the reach out, we came upon Arco, who is known in the state and works closely with the Historical Society. And I don't want to go into it, but Dave did a walkthrough with her. Dave, if you don't mind coming up just for one second, and I just want him to explain that when she went in there, there are historical values, like our tin ceiling and other things that bode well for us in the grant process.
Good evening again. So, yeah, we gave her a basic tour of the facility so that she could get an understanding and lay a land. And she was excited to see some of the, you know, more historical things that are in there, like the vault, the tin ceiling that's in the, what I call the mechanical room, and then above the suspended ceiling that's in the hall itself. Those are all pretty unique features to the time period and frame of the building, the originality of it, anyway. Some of the challenges are the vinyl siding, and there are some more modern-day type of, you know, construction materials that have been used in the building and whatnot. But obviously, the timber frame too is another, you know, really relevant piece of the whole construction. You can't see it, but nonetheless, it is there. But perhaps, you know, later on, in other phases down the road, that is something that could be exposed to some degree, so that you can kind of showcase that part of the building as well. So, yeah, there's some historical stuff there that could, could yield well in grants and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you, David.
You're welcome.
So we reached out, and she has agreed to come in and do a forensic audit of the building. And the key of this forensic audit is more to see if it's stable. I hate to say this as a lover of history, but if the building's not stable, then we have, unfortunately, other avenues we have to pursue. And we'll have to make a decision if we want to spend the money to stabilize it, if we want to spend, it is going to cost, you know, so it opens up a whole area that we have not pursued, and we need that knowledge in order to make the decision. It's key. It is a key part of the decision. So what I'm asking for tonight is a two-phased proposal. Arco would come in, she'd write, and the proposal for us. Her fee would be 60, oh my God, 69, 22 or 77, I don't have my glasses, and I apologize. And her cover letter, Kristen, did she say there was a chance for some refund?
Yeah.
I would like you to bring that in.
So the sum total of the quote is two parts. It's a structural analysis and a building review analysis and assessment report. The structural analysis would be subcontracted from Arco to a company called Structures North, and that's the $12,000 part of the quote. The $6,977 is the creation of a report. And while other firms create similar reports in their own format, this report would be constructed in a format that is already compliant with the reports requested by New Hampshire Preservation Alliance for any sort of grant. There is one particular grant called an assessment grant, which could reimburse up to $4,500 of this. It's a one-to-one matching grant, so obviously, this total cost of $18,977 would be eligible for that $4,500. And there's also the possibility of then using that same report that she created to pursue more significant LCHIP, which is another funding program, funding later on in the process. This company's had extensive success with providing reports for, that are then, receive assessment grants.
So would this give the building a certain designation with the state that qualifies then for the grants? Is that the purpose of this?
So not all of these grants require the designation yet. That's part of the assessment process. Certainly, there's a number of different registers you can be on. The two big ones are the State Register of Historic Properties and the National Register. National Register is much more stringent than the State Register, both in its conditions for inclusion and for what you can then subsequently do to the property. It is extraordinarily unlikely, in fact, I'd go out on a limb as far as to say this doesn't qualify for the National Register. However, the significance of this building makes it highly likely that it will qualify for the State Register. And to dispel any things in advance, that doesn't mean you can't modernize the building. It doesn't mean you can't replace roof shingles or siding or update the interior. It just is a statement of significance. And while that certainly opens the door to some other grants, not all grants require it. But having, and if we were to pursue state registry, there are specific consultants who work with that, they're not terribly expensive. I worked with the one at the Morrison House to get that on the State Register. But this is certainly an excellent starting point for receiving more funding. This company has done, is working the Exeter Town Hall and the Mount Vernon Town Hall as well.
Is the purpose of this assessment specifically just for the registry, or is it other?
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
No, so the historic assessment, it is a existing conditions, it gives the history of the property, but it also gives existing conditions, how to deal with those existing conditions in the best way moving forward with cost estimates and additional information, including a potential phasing schedules, which is, it would give us a variety of options for phasing. To give you an idea, I believe Mount Vernon is being phased over 10 years. And as far as what it gives us in terms of the structural analysis, the $12,000, it basically gives us what we should do. Like, here are the things that you need to do to make this building stable. We then, if you look at the fifth page, that Structures North said, they divide it into Part A and Part B. What we'd be paying for is Part A, which is the analysis and basically the game plan. We would not be obligated to go with Structures North for Part B. We could certainly go out through our own bid process. But Part B would be basically the engineering plan, design, detail, stamped plans. So if Part A is what we need to do, Part B would be, how are we going to do it? And that is the part that would come after this report.
But we can't, we can't even put an idea on Part B until we have Part A.
In terms of, you know, when I spoke with her today, she said it's generally about that phase, in her experience, is generally about the same price, if not a little bit more than the...
Same price, the 6977?
No, the whole, the total bill, about the same, if not a little bit more. I asked her for like, are we talking four figures, five figures, or six figures, basically? And she felt fairly comfortable saying it would like to be in, it would be in the five-figure range.
Okay.
But again, that is not a time-sensitive thing. There is no obligation that we would turn around and do it immediately thereafter. There's no obligation to go with Structures North for it. Structures North is simply the, the company that comes packaged with Arco for the analysis.
Is there...
I'm sorry, and Part B, if you noticed, one of the items is stamped plans, which we don't have any, we have no idea what is necessary for engineering in that building. So in the future, if we come in and we get this, we have the ability to get that information, something we don't have at our fingertips now.
Anything else?
Nope.
What, is there a term, like a deadline, when this needs to be done, or?
So the quote is good for 30 days, I believe. I'll double-check that, but I think the quote is good for 30 days. From the time of when the project commences to delivery is eight weeks. And she said that's pretty, that's pretty standard. And then we would be signing the contract with both Arco and Structures North, but Arco would be managing the analysis phase of the project for us. So we're looking at about two months, in addition to the time to process the contract, I'd say probably about 10 weeks from your decision, if you so choose to fund it, to having a workable product.
I have a question to Justin about vehicles of funding it. How do we do that to maintain compliance and legality and stuff?
Yeah, where would this money be coming from?
If you need more time to prep, we can, we can answer that at a different...
So essentially, what I heard there was the 12,000 one? We don't necessarily need to go with Structures North, is that?
No, you, we do need to for the 12, for this initial one, for Part A. It's a package, they use them for their assessments, they partner with them. The second part, Part B, which we don't have a number for yet, we could certainly go out to bid separately.
I'd have to look in more detail, but there is an exception for professional services for the purchasing policy. I'd have to look to see if this would qualify under there.
Let me ask you a question. When we do roads, is there any type of engineering, structural analysis that ever has to be done with them?
The answer is yes.
And how do we pay for that?
Likely through the roadway maintenance trust fund.
Is this similar?
Again, you're putting me on the spot here. I don't want to say yes and find out that this doesn't qualify as an expendable maintenance trust fund. Where this is $18,977, I'd look at seeing if it could be come out of there, or if it could come out of the operating budget from other funds that, for other plans, we don't have.
Yeah, the question I would have is, is if we did this on any of the existing buildings that we had, if we had... Yeah, the question I would have is if we did this on any of the existing buildings that we had, if we had something like, take the senior center. You know, we can probably look at how we spent the money for the senior center and how we, that would probably be a good example of how we preserved an older building and where the money came from. And I'm not asking you to tell me where it came from. I'm just using that as an example.
Yep. Like I said, it's my bigger thought with this was the purchasing policy, not the funding mechanism. Because whether it's the expendable maintenance, because this is a town owned building, it is a town fixed asset. It should qualify. I'm saying should because I need to just verify and I don't want to be put on the hook for that, but it should qualify. And if it doesn't, we would look at utilizing the operating budget and under expending certain lines and maybe not doing certain projects we had initially planned to, to be able to absorb this. However, the professional services, like I said, it should qualify as an exemption, but I need more time to verify that is the case.
Where did we, which lineup did we pay Western Sampson out of last year for their analysis? That was from code.
Arpa.
Thank you.
So Justin, we have several meetings before that 30 day, that 30 day window. Would the next notice meeting on the December 2nd give you enough time to get that information and kind of put, formulate a plan on, on how to fund this in compliance with the purchasing policy and stuff, December 2nd?
So.
Yeah.
With the quote, the date on the quote is October 31st. So it's had to go through the Reverend Morrison House Committee before coming to you. I can certainly, I would happily contact Tracy and see if she could extend the quote.
I should have that answer much sooner. If you guys want to provide the authority based on essentially it passing, which like I said, it should. I don't see an issue why it shouldn't, but I just.
Yeah.
I want to verify before I say yes with 100% certainty on that.
Yes, please.
When the former town manager was in our meeting, it was stated that he had funding for us. It's in our minutes.
Did he say where from?
His budget.
So that would be one of the places then?
That, that he'd be willing to work with us to give us funding for this. The other concern I have, if we continue to kick the can down, that building will be open and empty for till night, till 26th before we can put anything on the ballot. I would assess that if you could come up with $15,000 for Christmas lights, I think you can come up with eighteen nine seven seven.
That's, I never said I couldn't. I said that I would need to verify whether it could be expendable maintenance or through the operating.
Right.
I just want to make sure that the purchasing policy is in agreement with us. And like I said, I believe it should be.
We decided on this without any bidding and services. And I'm just trying to find out why the historic town hall from the 1800s is less important than tree lights on the common.
Well, why don't we do this? What about schedule a meeting next week, a special meeting to get the information from Justin and some more information and decide as a council?
You can also make a decision pending funding.
So the funding I don't have a concern about, like I said. The concern I have is making sure it's within the purchasing policy. However, I am about 99% sure that this qualifies as professional services. Well, I just haven't really fully looked at it yet to give you the 100%.
Right, and that's, that's.
And I apologize for that. I, I haven't. I'll be honest with you guys.
You don't have to memorize word for word, Justin?
I should, I know.
Can I, can I just add something last week? You, you guys stalled a $10,000 request for heating. I understand it's maintenance. So we know the building isn't going to have heat this year and it's going to need to be ventilated. So moisture doesn't pick up in there. The windows are going to have to be cracked and we're going to have to keep air flowing through that building. It's going to be cold. But and I'm not trying to be mean here, but you went out and you got an assessment of, I don't know what the figure was, I think it was $10,000 to put temporary heating in the place and we kind of said no. I'm just trying to understand. If we have discretionary funding, why can't this come out of discretionary funding?
All, all I'm saying.
I'm not, I'm not saying it can't. I'm, I'm not.
I'm just saying.
I know, but we keep saying it's funding. I want to make sure that it's okay with the purchasing policy. Like I said, I am 99% sure. I am not 100%. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not, I.
Okay.
I'm just being honest with everybody.
I'm just saying that it's, it's not reflective of us as a community looking sound in our, our fiduciary responsibilities if we can spend money here and spend money here and then we don't know where we're supposed to spend. I mean, I'm just a little concerned. I just got to have to say that publicly. I'm a little concerned of, you know, everything that's going on here. I mean, I sat up here and said, let's get rid of the treasurer and that was the dumbest thing I ever said in my life.
All right.
I will say, I am happy to see in here that they are taking account Western Sampson's analysis and their different options that they're already looked at the building with. So I am glad that they are taking that into account. They're just not starting from a blank slate. So that is good to see.
Do you remember how much?
Or they weren't going to take that into account.
Do you remember how much Western Sampson's assessment cost?
$54,000.
$54,000.
So Western and Sampson's first two assessments were slightly different and Dave can back me up and get this wrong. It was an existing conditions report and then the, the redevelopment opportunities, both of which were used substantially in the preparation of this quote. I will say for context, Western and Sampson came to the exact same conclusion after those two that our Cove has, that this is the next step. So they are in lockstep. Our Cove's, we did actually have numbers for Western and Sampson's structural analysis. It was slightly different because it's based upon, it was not based upon creating a report in the historic format that this is. And I will say that I'm happy to work with Justin as he, this is an area where, you know, I actually have a tiny bit of expertise. I can work with him on this. So we can determine this later.
Justin, I just want to pause for a second. I appreciate you doing the due diligence and, and making sure that your eyes are dotted and teeth are crossed. I mean, it's, I appreciate that and I want to say thank you. I personally, why don't we just have a meeting next week? Special meeting and allow Justin to, to look into everything, work with Cheerston and it's one week.
And it's not that we're, we don't want to spend the money. We just want to clarify where and what lineup and how it can legally be done. We just want to have it be clarified, that's all. We don't want to not spend the money. It's just the fact that.
So I have a, I have a question. I'm sorry Ted, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're good.
I just have a question. What's my deadline for warrants?
The second Tuesday in January.
Which is?
I got it.
Friday, I believe.
Second Tuesday.
Thirteenth, fourteenth, sorry.
Kirsten, any chance?
So that we would get the report back by then?
If we keep delay?
Even if we turned it in now, we wouldn't have it back by January 14th. That's only six weeks away from now.
Fish and Warren articles.
So here, here's some language for consideration, just off the top of my head. Motion to approve the agreement pending the Director of Finance funding mech, directing the Director of Finance funding mechanism. This stands until the next town council meeting. In other words, what I'm trying to say is, is that yes, we're going to move forward with this pending the funding mechanism from the Director of Finance so that they can engage these people. And then if, and then we have to do a more formal motion to approve it. That's, I'm, I'm, it's not very pretty.
Can we, can we give me like 10 minutes to go over the purchasing policy and we can have this done in 10 minutes? I just, like I said, it's, I am 99% sure. I just want that extra 1%, I'm not, I'm not trying to be a jerk. It's.
No, Justin.
And you can put me on pause and I'll be more than happy to step down and you can continue the meeting.
We'll do, we'll do that. Thank, thank you, Justin. Thank you, Sarah. Dave?
Just in, in full disclosure too, there, there are other boxes to be checked. This particular contract doesn't address anything to do with hazmat. Okay, so a hazmat analysis of that building must be done, whether if we're going to proceed with renovating it in any extent or sadly if it's removed, if the building is taken down. So there's nothing here that we're talking about on that. So that's another, another.
Be part of part B?
It, it would be, it would be a further, further step towards plans and whatnot. So I just want to make sure, because we didn't touch on that. It was part of the next step in the Western Sampson process, but we're not doing that here. We're just strictly looking at the structural analysis.
Did Western Sampson give you a potential cost?
For the, where, where we were to roll back the hands of time last year when we were in this particular spot, they were, if I recall, it was 16,000 for the structural analysis with the hazmat assessment.
With the?
Yes.
Compared to 12 that we're looking at today?
So, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
That brings up another point, because.
So are we talking about this or are we not?
Well, apparently we're talking about it because we're ready to approve it in 10 minutes. So that's why I think it's a, you know, what's the plan beyond here? Because we can jump forward to approve the next step, but do we know what's going on? Like Dave just said, we need a hazmat assessment now. Do we plan on putting it on the ballot this year? Have we know what we're going to do with the building? And these are the results I thought we were going to get from the Reverend Robinson Meeting House Committee. And I'm not saying it's not there. I'm just saying I don't have that information right now. So I don't know what this is a step towards as far as, yeah, it's a step forward, but what's the rest of the plan? And if, if we're going to just do this and then like the Western and Sampson, and then it sits there for two years, that's where, you know, I, I don't know where we're going after this. And that's where I'm, I'm struggling with this.
All right, so why don't we do this?
Good question.
Great question.
Let's hear from the chair.
The chairman has not, has taken our time back to address Mr. Favor. You did charge us with that. And through the charge, we found out that we pretty well have a damn good plan, but we can't go anywhere without getting this first. Because I will tell you this, unless you want to pay me three, $400,000 to go sit over there and be the GM for that building, or one of you, we have to go this route. And what can the Morrison House be, the Morrison Meeting House be used for? Well, there's a beautiful pavilion outside that can be used for picnics, for food trucks, to work with concerts on the common. There's a beautiful opportunity for people to go do canning events with UNH. There's a lot of reasons to save it. And the biggest reason to save it is it's older than you and it's more important to London Dairy because it's been here a long time. Tom Este went to kindergarten. Tom Este went to kindergarten in that building. That building has a lot of significance and to just put it off because we don't, we don't know anything, you know a lot. You got to give us the opportunity to give you the information. And if you don't, then you can sit here and we can be two, like people that just go around and around. The catch 22 moment of, oh, well, we don't know what this is happening and we can't do anything because we don't know what this is happening and we can't do anything. And that's what's happening here. A decision's got to be made. You, sir, are on the town council. You need to make the decision tonight if Justin comes back with the information. If you're for it or you're not. If you're for it, we move forward. If you're not, then we're done. Tear the building down.
That's not the options.
Well, that's what you just said.
No, it's not what I just said. So you said you want an opportunity to present the plan and you've come up with a well-designed plan. Alls I'm asking for is to hear the plan.
We can't do the plan without the engineering. Are you an engineer?
No, I'm not saying we, I'm not saying we do the plan. I just want to know what.
So why don't, why don't we, hold on a second. Hold on, hold on.
Twenty-two, we're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't.
Time out, please. I'm just going to make a call. We're going to move this to the, to the 26th. We'll have a special meeting. Justin, it'll give Justin plenty of time. I understand that.
No, I'm good.
Justin.
It should be qualified under the professional service exemption.
Let's still push.
Do I know if you guys want to do it? That is up to you. It is qualified under the professional service exemption.
And for the record, I want the building to a functional state. I think it should not be torn down. I absolutely am, I'm just trying to ask questions to get us to move along, not to stall, get past this step and then we go around and around in a circle. So I want it to move forward. That's why I'm asking the questions I'm asking.
And none of us, and including all of you, have the capability to be a general contractor and structurally engineer that building. And we have to know that in order to make all the decisions you're asking for.
I just didn't know if you had more information, that's all.
This is the beginning. And if we find out that a structural engineer goes in there and says three quarters of the sills are rotted and it's going to cost you 700 and making up numbers, $50,000 to just replace half the sills.
Makes a different story.
That is correct.
Yes.
And without that information, none of us can make a decision.
So.
We're all guessing on numbers. Nobody's given us numbers, real numbers. And this is the opportunity for those.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with accepting our Cove's proposal today by the Reverend Morrison Meeting House Chair tonight.
For discussion?
No, move forward with what's been presented to us. We've already had discussion for probably at least a half hour. I don't know what more discussion we need. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right, so I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion fails for a second. Cheerson, question, what would next steps be?
So you mean after, if the council decided to fund this $19,000, what would the next step be, certainly? So the next step would be beyond this would be that part B coming up with architectural drawings. So you would have, after this is completed, you have two paths to take. You could either move forward with an architect, with architectural drawings, designs and a plan, or you could decide that the building is not in a condition to preserve. So after this, you'd be able to make that decision basically, pretty conclusively. Is the building in good enough condition to preserve or is it not? And at that point after this plan is when you'll be able to make the decision whether you want to go to the next step to get drawings, stamped plans, bids or not. If you decide to do that, then the next option would likely be some sort of warrant article to fund that. To fund my suggestion, I don't know if you want to do it this year. This is the committees, this is what I heard at the committee. So this is not, they would be interested in doing a warrant article to move forward. Again, this has not gone by Justin. This has not gone by anything. This is reporting what the committee said last time. To possibly be used for things like architectural drawings and grant funding, matching, grant matching. Whether we want to move forward with that this year, next year, or at all, would come in front of you for decision after this is reported, after this process. But in order to make that informed decision about where you go and the security of the building, this was Western and Sampson, and yes, Western and Sampson had a different plan. Whichever, whichever, you could go with any number of companies for any number of different reasons. This particular company has the experience in a similar sort of building and which is why the committee landed with this one. Again, this is their decision. This is what they're putting forward. But this would have been the next step with Western and Sampson as well.
So again, if you don't, if you don't mind me chiming in here.
Please.
Like I said, my concern was the purchasing policy with this. It's professional service, so we should be all set. In terms of the funding mechanism, where this is the line, or Reverend Morrison House, and it is a town facility, I believe we could use the expendable maintenance trust fund. That being said, that does not mean we have to. As she said, the town manager mentioned it would come out, or the former town manager mentioned that it would come out of their budget. I was not aware of that. I am not willing to just throw 20,000 without looking into it in more detail. That's not a problem. If that's already been earmarked, we can use that as well. There are plenty, those are the two funding mechanisms we would have. My concern was more on the purchasing policy.
All right. What say you, Ron?
What say me? I liked your original proposal about considering it some more and putting off the vote.
You guys available at 26?
Yeah.
6:30? You available 6:30 on the 26th, Tuesday?
Probably need to post something like that, but.
Probably need to post something like that, but-
Correct. Have a special, special meeting?
Yeah, I mean, you know, um, what do we, um-
The only reason why I say six thirties is because I know that-
I'm just, it's fine. I'm, I'm not, I'm sorry. It's fine. I'm sorry, just, I had to step out and speak to Captain O'Donoghue for something, so I apologize. You can use it under expendable maintenance trust. You're comfortable with the dollars being spent. Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is my concern initially was the purchasing policy. And I believe that this qualifies as a professional service. It's engineering services, so it should be okay. The nineteen thousand, I believe, would be able to come out of expendable maintenance because it is a town facility. Reverend Morrison House is no longer under the previous agreement where we are now responsible for it all, so it could come out of there. She had mentioned that the previous town manager said that it would be absorbed in his budget. I was not aware of that.
But we, we don't know that.
So I don't-
I'm not worried about that.
That's exactly where my-
So what I'm saying is, is that you, you have the be able, you have the ability to be able to fund this, to take it to the next step.
It would have to be approved at the next town council meeting. Or once the bill is due, if you wanted to use the expendable maintenance.
And this person is a one-of-a-kind, is really not more than, there's not many people who are in this business.
That I, I can't speak to that.
Is this person a more of a one-of-a-kind business? This is like their specialty area?
It is highly specialized. I wouldn't feel comfortable going on the limb and saying there's absolutely no other business that could. But they're certainly highly specialized in the service they provide for specifically municipal historic buildings.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate that.
So why, why don't we do this? Why don't we post a special meeting for the twenty-six, six thirty? Because I know that the school board has their budget kickoff meeting at seven. And I, is everyone available for that?
Yep.
Yep.
And we'll put that, we'll put that on the agenda. We'll notice that. That give you enough time for compliance, like legal?
Yes.
Justin, will that give you enough time to, to look into things?
I've already, my, I think we're, I've given you my view at this point.
Okay.
It likely will not change. If it does, I'll let you know. But like I said, this is a professional service. That's what I wanted to verify before saying, go ahead.
I, I'd like, I'd like to, to move this to the twenty-six. That will give us time to meet their, their period that it's good for, the thirty days from the thirty-first of October. It will allow us to process it and, got a week, less than a week, more than a week. Alright?
Seven days.
Seven days. Alright, thank you very much. Here's my question, though. Huh? Do we, what is the council's will on maintaining the Reverend Morrison Meeting House Committee? What is the timeframe that they're supposed, that they're charged till? Definite, or?
Their initial charge was to present something to the, to the council by October first, which they did fulfill. There is no timeframe on their existence. It's up to you all when you want to sunset that committee.
I'm fine with keeping it for now, I believe. I mean, there might be some, I don't know.
Honestly, once you accept this and the person goes to do the work, you might as well sunset it because the committee will have a different charge.
Okay.
A steering, yeah, a steering committee would have a very different charge.
So then, should we do that on the twenty-six since we have a meeting then?
You can do it whenever. I mean, you're not going to get the proposal for a bid, so you have time.
Alright, alright. So we'll move on to Resolution two oh four dash two nine. Acceptance of unanticipated revenue under RSA thirty-one colon sixty-five B, Section three B, FY twenty-five household hazardous waste grant. Cheerson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is simply the formal acceptance of an annual grant that we received to help fund household and hazardous waste collection. As you may recall, last week I had you take the vote to allow either Assistant Town Manager Kelly Karen or Finance Director Justin Campo sign said grant because the state's requirements changed. So we needed this to come before you after that document was signed. This is a grant we've gotten for several years running now.
Two nine, sorry, I'm just looking at the page. So this is, uh, unanticipated monies received less than ten thousand. And so it's for the amount of three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Correct.
Alright, with that, I'll accept a motion to adopt Resolution two oh two four dash two nine.
So moved.
Motion from Ted.
Second.
Second from Ron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative. Thank you. Public hearings, I'll accept the motion to open public hearing.
So moved. Second.
A motion from Ted, second from Ron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative. We are in public hearing. Resolution two oh two four dash two six, anticipated, uh, anticip, I can't say that word.
Anticipated. Anticipated revenue, unanticipated revenue. I would suggest that, since these are all coming from the same-
Presenter?
Same presenter and from Homeland Security, that you entertain all three resolutions at once and in one public hearing.
Alright, so what would be the process to do that, John?
You've opened the public hearing. All you have to do is say that Resolution two oh two four, two six, two seven, and two eight to be presented by Justin Campo, the Finance Director for grants coming from Homeland Security for cold weather gear, SWAT SOU, Bearcat, and elevated threat at MHT.
Alright, go ahead, Mr. Campo. All three.
All three. So the police department?
Get all your comments at the same time as well.
Absolutely. So the police department has gone out and received these grants on behalf of the Southern New Hampshire Operations Unit, I believe. So this is a fifteen-community town. Actually, that's the first two. The third one is for, I believe, overtime at the Manchester Airport in terms of elevated threat training or elevated threats. It's to assist with the overtime costs at the airport. Are there any questions regarding these grants?
Chief?
Yes, we have questions.
Come up. So I was wondering if you could provide your perspective, insight on, on these three resolutions, please?
Sure, any one specific?
Uh, we'll start with the one for thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty, which is the cold weather gear for SWAT SOU.
Sure. That grant was performed by the Special Operations Unit for Cold Weather Gear. As you guys, or those of you who are not new to the council, we are generally dubbed the grant writers for all SOU grants for a couple of reasons. One, because we're good at them and we've always had support. So we take pride in doing this for the SOU team. The cold weather gear is one of those things, these things don't come up often. It's, it's a need for them, especially in the elements that they perform in. I don't know about you folks, but if you had to sit outside for four or five hours in the middle of January, February, on a post, you'd want the appropriate gear. So this allows us to provide that to the members that serve all these communities at no cost.
Alright, gentlemen, do you want to vote on the, on Resolution two oh two four dash two six right now?
I thought we were taking them all together at one time.
Well, presentation. Alright, so we'll talk then. Resolution two oh four dash two seven, the three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's for the Bearcat, chief?
That is correct. This is to replace a two thousand and five Bearcat that was bought for a hundred and ninety-five thousand, some twenty years ago. It's the oldest vehicle in any one of these fifteen agencies' fleets. This is all fully funded through the grant, and the vehicle that we have now is past its time. And with this one here, as you can imagine, it provides safety for officers in high-risk situations where people with either, either hostage or barricaded scenarios are, are putting our people in harm's way. This vehicle allows them to get up close and protects everyone's life who is performing their, their public safety to every member of the community that they serve in.
So we already have, we already have one. It's, it's, it's past its useful life?
Yes, we've had one since two thousand and five.
So there's line items to perform the maintenance training and stuff?
It does not cost the taxpayers of Londonderry one cent. This comes through the Southern New Hampshire Special Operations Unit's budget.
Any questions from the council?
Just a quick, where is it currently housed?
We always house it at Derry. They have a larger facility, a parking lot area. Their mechanic maintains it. Gas comes, uh, gas, oil, things of that nature come out of the SOU budget.
Um, what happens to the old one?
Uh, I don't know what they're going to do with that one off the top of my head. That's out of my, my area of expertise.
No. Written in one that's been blown up before. I mean, I do, I do appreciate the value that it has.
We don't, we don't have a vehicle that's armored or bulletproof to protect people. That's the only one we have.
How often, how often has it been used in the last, since we had the other one?
Oh, gosh, how many times a year do you think they use them? Other than community events too, they get used, or any high-risk call out, I'd imagine. But like, they don't drive through houses or tear down buildings with it and crazy things that people see in the news and TV, nothing like that.
It's not used as a proactive vehicle. It's not used for just patrolling. It's, one of the teams activated. It's, it's, it's-
Yeah.
It's born on the activation. So I think we've had, the vehicle's been used probably in the last six months, five times, six times?
Okay.
Most recently, probably about a month ago, we did two high-risk search warrants and hooked it.
And that, that's just in Londonderry, not counting the other fifty times? Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
The last time we used it in Londonderry, Kimball Road, it was months ago.
Starhawk, wasn't it too?
And then Starhawk, so.
Yeah, okay.
Two, one was a barricaded suicidal individual. So he had a rifle. He fired a round off in the house while we had officers in the house. Those officers withdrew. It transitioned to a barricaded call, so the SWAT team came out. So in order to put officers in the driveway, we obviously used the vehicle. And in that particular case, we actually had a call in Nashua. So we used two Bearcats in that incident.
And Captain, you usually use this with high-profile visits and things along those lines?
Yeah, so, yeah, so when we have a presidential for, visit, for example, that vehicle's activated, it's on scene at the airport. Or be unseen, perhaps unseen, if there's an event here in town.
So just to confirm, zero maintenance from the taxpayers of Londonderry?
Correct.
Zero storage from the taxpayers?
Correct.
It's maintain, it's repaired by Dairy, PD, fuel, oil is covered by Dairy.
Yes, garage is our bet. It's garage and Dairy. They have a full-time mechanic, so we put it there. He puts eyes on it every day.
And the fuel, oil, I, I want to correct myself, comes out of the Southern New Hampshire Regional SWAT Team's budget, correct?
We're merely the applicant and the fiscal agent to facilitate this, just like the cold weather gear.
Okay. Any other questions from the council on this?
How many more times are we going to be able to hit up the Homeland Security grant?
It's the last time for that one.
Yeah, so.
Get it while we can.
This, this grant, they see about a dozen to two dozen applications every year. As you'd imagine, a bulk of it goes to hazmat equipment for fire, regional hazmat teams. So it usually leans to the fire side, but regional SWAT teams, Manchester National, this is really the only vehicle by which we can actually replace these vehicles. And as you imagine, we're all kind of on the same replacement cycle of that eighteen to twenty-year window.
Well, I commend you guys for being able to get out of Homeland Security, over four hundred grand from the federal government.
Yeah, the fact that we represent fifteen-
Thank you for bringing it back to the state of New Hampshire.
Fifteen police departments across three counties, you know, puts us in the top list.
Good job writing the grants. Uh, two oh two four dash two eight, the nine thousand dollars, elevated threat at MHT. This is for overtime.
Yes, to cover special assignments that happen up there, and we use it quite a bit. I mean, not to get into the acronyms and bore people, but the money's put to good use as it's indicated there for elevated threat assessments and so on.
Okay. Alright, council, how do you want to vote on this?
Chad?
Yeah.
Public hearing.
Oh, yeah, hey, thank you very much. Public, gentlemen, thank you. Alright, this is a public hearing, public comment. Thank you for that correction.
Thank you, Justin.
Just a question. When the chief says SOU funds this, where does SOU get the funds? Does anybody know? I mean, does each community donate so much money to this SOU fund? I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
Let the police department get it.
So each community donates money to this fund. How much money does Londonderry donate to the SOU fund? Because you stated, Chairman Franz, that no money from the taxpayer is going to maintain this vehicle, which is-
Right.
Kind of confusing here.
I, I agree. Thanks for the clarification, Dan.
So I, I said that, meaning that, so there's an annual fee that costs five thousand dollars for any, any county in Rockingham that chooses to partake in it. So that covers trainings, it covers a plethora of stuff. There is no pay-for-service other than that. So as you can imagine, there are some towns that don't partake in this Special Operations Unit because of various reasons. It's so expensive. A lot of agencies can't afford to train their staff. Fortunately for us, we can. And we're one of the founding fathers of that unit with Derry and Salem. So this has been around for a very long time, and those fees go to cover small costs like that.
Okay, so five thousand dollars comes from fees. You're appropriated, there's already appropriated funds in the default that covers that.
We've been paying for this, sir, since, I think it was nineteen ninety-six, ninety-four?
Okay. Alright. Fifteen communities that pay the same, roughly the same amount?
The exact amount.
The exact amount. Everyone pays five grand. Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public regarding these three resolutions? Alright, we'll go back to the council. Thank you, Justin, again. Who do you want to vote on this?
Make a motion to approve Resolution two oh two four dash two six, two oh four, uh, two oh two four, two seven, and two oh two four dash twenty-eight.
Alright, so I have a motion from Ted. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from John.
I was wondering what they were waiting for. Wanted to give you a chance.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative. Resolutions are adopted. I'll accept the motion to pull, close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Sean, second from Ted. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative. Public hearing is closed. Old business, public workshop. We'll take a couple minutes for the budget committee to-
Ron, do you know what hazardous waste was specifically for? I'm just curious.
It's a yearly one they apply for. It's help us with this.
Alright. Budget workshop, Mr. Campo. Thank you very much. I'll wait. Alright, all set?
Alright, so there are a couple changes. You should notice that the budget has dropped by just under two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
The default or proposed?
Both. So I've been working with our legal counsel. As you're well aware, we have various union, sorry, we have various CBAs on the warrant article this year. And the way the default budget works, those increases, unless there's an evergreen clause or language revolving around them continuing, remain in status quo. So I wanted to make sure that that was the case prior to removing them and working with legal counsel. That is the case, so they have been removed out now. And their entire increase will be reflected in the warrant articles for those unions. In addition to that, if you look at the tax calculation sheet, you'll see that I have added the traffic unit, as we discussed at the last meeting, as well as the beautify Londonderry signs for twenty thousand, with ten thousand being raised through fundraising and donations. Other than that, it remains status quo from last meeting.
Does everyone know what an evergreen clause is?
Great question. Go ahead, John.
So in our collective bargaining agreements, there's something called an evergreen clause. If you have an evergreen clause in the contract, it would mean that if you didn't, if a contract didn't pass by the voters and was not accepted, or if it was something that where you did not come to a agreement to be able to put forth to the voters, the evergreen clause would kick in, and then whatever's in the contract would continue.
I think we only have one contract that has an evergreen clause. So out of the seven contracts we have, only one has an evergreen clause, which means is, is that, what he's saying is, is that we, we have to fund whatever's going to go through the CBA, through the voters, first, before we can put it in the budget. So whatever was, whatever came forward in wages from last year during a contract year has to be zeroed out and has to be re-voted on, can't go into this budget. And will only come forward when the voters approve the budget. So the dollars, since there's no evergreen clause, the dollars that exist in a current contract don't exist going forward.
Sarah, you gonna say something?
Just to clarify, their positions and their wages are in the budget, they just do not get a raise. So if they were moving a step, they do not move that next step, because their contract is now out of a contracted term. So their positions and whatever they're making currently are in the budget. Their steps or anything else that they would be guaranteed, like a merit increase or anything, that is not. That would be in the warrant article for the CBA.
Okay.
So that's why I dropped, thank you for that, that was excellent. That's why I dropped two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
And like I said, I wanted to verify with our legal counsel before doing that, where removing it, I feel, is an easier offer to the taxpayers than trying to put it back in, if I was incorrect in that assumption.
Okay.
And also to clarify, you'll see as you go through departments that salaries have gone down, that's why. Just please note, some departments are not on CBA or do not have employees that have C, um, CBAs in negotiation. So for instance, police and fire, those negotiations are not in session right now. They have a valid contract for next fiscal year. So you won't see the savings or the decrease in there, because their contract is still going on. And then you also have employees who are non-rep, so they are not part of a bargaining unit. So their contract is still ongoing as if it would continue year after year with those appropriations.
Great explanation, thank you.
So in other words, if they approve the CBAs at the ballot, that two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is going to go up from where it is. I don't know what that number's gonna be, but it's going to go up.
Would the amount that we see on the warrant article be, um, an additional tax per year? Or would it just be for the duration of that?
Nope. So what happens is we would take the increase of that CBA and we would cost out how, how much it would cost each year. If that CBA is approved by the voters, then that automatically becomes default for the, for the next years.
Okay, and the amount that's in the warrant article would be the total amount of the contract?
We would break it out by fiscal year.
Okay.
Essentially the assumption that after that first fiscal year, it's an estimate, because people leave and everything of that.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Budcom? Counsel? Sean's got his reading glasses on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't need them yet.
More Vero than me.
Any, uh, anything from the department heads, Justin?
So one of the items, as we discussed tonight with the Christmas lights, or, uh, with, sorry, with the, um, holiday lights, is we put twenty thousand in the town common line in the budget. I'm not sure if we wanna discuss lowering that or removing it completely, but I just want to bring that to your attention as well, since it will now be, um, donated for at least this year. I'm not sure what the plan you guys have for next year is, but that money is in there and could potentially be decreased, because the town common historically has gone over with other expenses.
Right.
But the majority of that was intended for the, uh, holiday lights on the common.
Let's say, put it back to where it was.
Which was the twenty K?
Well, I, I'm, may have a, I'd like to ask the council a question.
Go ahead.
I'd like that, the question I'd like to ask the council is, is that we have gone through two meetings and everything, and then we have put a number of proposals out there of things that are possible or not possible. I would like to ask the council if it might be appropriate for us to take a breath and step back a little bit and let the budget committee do their thing and let them come back to us with recommendations versus us continuing to drive the conversation.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it's more or less what I was stating at the beginning. I'd like to see that.
Yeah, it, it was what you said. I just, more of a reminder.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, you know, and they're here for a reason, and, you know, to back, to back what both of you said, you know, I, I definitely would like to hear some feedback on when you have your meeting, uh, and your, your, uh, committee comes together and, and, and provide some suggestions. I know Sean talked about it, John, John talked about it. So, I, I'm good with that, council, we're good?
Absolutely.
All right.
Okay, so we have some questions that we had, some we, some we asked last week, uh, feels like longer than a week ago.
For you.
Some we, some we didn't get to, uh, and, and I'm sure that budget committee members have questions that maybe aren't on this list. Uh, but we had some questions kinda specifically on certain lines in each department. For example, I'll just start from the top, uh, the town manager's office, uh, one of the members said, what accounts for the six percent increase in salaries in the default budget? Are those contracted increases? Some of these may be specific things, Justin, I apologize.
So some of that has been removed, because you'll see, based on what we just said, some of those employees are on CBAs that are being negotiated.
Okay.
So some of their salaries are status quo, meaning that they've been put back to where, what they're earning right now.
Okay.
So it's a five point three percent increase now?
Some of those employees also are not on CBA, so a non-rep employee would, is eligible for a five percent. So a certain amount of that is merit and a certain amount of that is, is COLA. So each department has a list of employees, um, you should have it in your binders, and it, they're all based on different, whatever union they're part of, or, for instance, like a non-rep is someone who's not part of a union.
And we discussed this last year, that, that those town employees that are town hall-specific employees that are not in a union are eligible for a COLA and are up to two and a half percent merit or something like that?
So the COLA is tied to the, uh, Boston Regional CPI, and the merit is up to two and a half percent.
Okay.
And the cap on the COLA is three percent. It's not unlimited, it's, there's a cap on it as well, which is why you're getting about the five point five.
Makes sense. Uh, you want me to just go on to the next one?
Sure. Meeting.
Okay.
Looks like you're rolling with it.
All right, so, there's a fifty-four percent increase in salaries, again, town manager's office, from twenty twenty-three actuals to twenty twenty-six default.
Yeah, so we, um, back during that time, we had an assistant town manager slash HR director.
Okay.
So we now have them separate, where it's, um, assistant town manager and director of economic development, and then an HR director as well. So you'll see that increase is why.
Okay. Um, Ryan, you wanna take those recommended reductions under town manager's office?
Sure. So I was just looking at, you know, I think we've talked a lot about right sizing budgets over the last couple meetings, which, which is great. But the right sizing's always going up. We're not taking a look at bringing any expenses down, so I just, I wanted to identify some, they might be low-hanging, small, small-ticket items, but just any, any dollar amount counts. We've been arguing over ten, fifteen thousand dollar bills the last couple weeks. So I think any, any number, uh, so I was looking at line items that have not met the proposed budget for twenty twenty-six over the last three years of actuals, from twenty-two through twenty-four. So the first one, uh, printing services, we haven't exceeded six thousand dollars, we're budgeting ten. Recommend?
Which, which department?
Sorry.
Town manager.
Town manager.
These are all in the town manager's office?
These, yeah, well, I think we're gonna go department by department. Uh, so six, six, we haven't spent more than six, we're budgeting ten, recommend bringing that down to six thousand dollars. Dues and subscriptions, we haven't spent more than, uh, fifty and a half. We're budgeting fifty-eight, recommending to bring that down to fifty-two. Travel and mileage?
Thousand?
Yep.
Thank you.
Travel and mileage, we haven't spent more than seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, we're budgeting twenty-nine hundred, recommending bring that down to a thousand dollars.
Sorry, give me one second here.
I will, um, I'll take a look into that. You're right, looking at it, we have not, so we could look at, like, we, um, decrease that or move it to the more appropriate line that we're over-expending within that budget.
So in other words, what you just said was, is that you're not gonna decrease anything, you're gonna put it someplace else?
If, if, if they are-
Justin.
Nope, you're not wrong. If, here's the thing, as we've discussed with the other items, we may spend, overspend another line and then freeze, or not freeze, but essentially freeze that line, so we don't spend it, because we've already spent it in a separate line. So what I'll do is I'll take a look to see where we've overspent, see if it makes sense to move it to there, or to cut it completely if we are in line with it, if that works for you.
Yeah, I think, uh-
I mean, I think we have both goals. We want the lines correct. But I would be nice, you know, those numbers cut, I don't know what, one was four grand, one was, uh, I think five grand. We cut, fixing those three things potentially reduces the number by ten grand. And I know that's, again, not a big number, but Ryan's right. We've been talking about the small numbers add up. So, you know, if we're getting the other lines right-sized, he's got a good point that we could correct these in a positive direction.
I think our, our twenty, twenty-four actuals are six hundred and, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We're budgeting seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars at the department. That's what, a thirty, thirty-three percent increase?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
I'm saying the twenty-four actuals was two hundred and, uh, I'm sorry, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, we're budgeting seven hundred and ninety in twenty twenty-six. It's about a thirty-three percent increase. So I think the department has some fluff in there.
And you're saying the majority of that increase is coming from adding an additional position at a high level?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Cause if you walk, the budget for salaries was four seventeen and it moved to five thirty-eight. And that's because of the additional salaries, or the additional personnel in that department that we, uh, moved into there from either other departments or by adding it to the town's budget. But in terms of what you're saying with the other ones, like I said, I'll take a look, cause if you're looking, management services for town manager has been overspent on average, looking at the last five years, by eleven thousand. Yes, in twenty-four, it was underspent, but we were in a freeze for five months of that. Uh, twenty-three was underspent as well, but twenty-two was overspent by twenty-three thousand. Um, what I would do is I'd likely take that out and look at the other ones to see where they are. And like I said, if there is, if we're not using those buffers to cover places that we are overspending, we can remove it. But I would like to talk about potentially moving it to the appropriate line before we talk about removing it completely, cause if we move it because it's not being spent, but we're still overspending a line, where it's hurting the budget in that aspect. So that's what I meant when I said I'd take a look at where we're overspending for that.
Fair.
Yeah, and, and I, I'm saying we agree with both ideas. Yes, let's get the other lines correct.
Yep.
You know, but if we can-
But no, you're right, in this case, and utilities is one where I've looked and I've adjusted between them. Um, but I will take a look at your recommendations with this, as well as, my guess is a majority of them are in that area, and I will apply the same concept if that works for the budget committee.
Okay.
Thank you. Absolutely.
So we have similar questions and comments for other areas?
Let's keep it going.
Okay.
I'm not ready yet.
Okay, you know.
This is, we're still on town manager, correct?
Still on town manager, go ahead, sorry.
So as Sean mentioned, I also do wanna take a look at what it, what it would take to take four percent off of this. And that would be total, that would be thirty-one thousand dollars. Is there any way that we could do that? That's my question.
Um, that would be difficult, but I would take a look.
Okay. I'm gonna answer-
So that's the other question for, I guess, Sean on that one. Is it four percent from the proposed, four percent from twenty-five, four percent from the default?
I did default. That's where my calculation came from.
And is it flat across the board or per department?
Just wanted to see what it looks like informational. Like I said, we did informational the other way. I'm just curious on, and, and I'm not, and as with the other one, I'm not intending that to be, oh, I realistically think we, we can. It's just sometimes when you go through that exercise, you find things that it's like, oh, okay, that, that presents itself. And I, I certainly don't think it'll present itself in every department, but I'm just-
Okay, so by department then?
Well, I think four percent across the board gives, gives you more leeway to find the savings.
Actually, yeah, you know what? Yeah, that's right. If it gives you more leeway, you're right, yeah.
Can, can we remove debt service from that calculation?
Can I?
Can I remove debt service from that calculation, cause-
That service is a-
Okay, that we can't change.
Cover that.
Can I ask a question? Is it four percent off the total operating budget or to, four percent off the total net to be raised?
Operating.
Because if we're, yeah, cause we have forty-four point six million over the general fund appropriations, but then after we take in revenues from the general fund and from the sewer, the net to be raised is twenty-seven point seven, so.
Yep.
So you want it from the forty-four point six, not the twenty-seven point seven?
Yep.
Okay. And what's that total number of four percent, if you don't mind?
It's just under one point seven million. Removing debt service.
Well, forty million is one point six. What are you over default by? Seven, eight hundred thousand?
Less than that now.
It was almost about eight, wasn't it?
Eight hundred twenty-two thousand.
So you've gotta come in eight hundred thousand dollars below default for three or four percent.
Correct.
Yes, but not all of that savings necessarily has to come from the proposed budget. Some of it could come from what we put out in, what we suggest in warrant articles, right? Like, we, there's, I'm sorry, can you guys hear me?
No, actually, that would, that would be good too, to make it more flexible.
There's a, there's a, you said the town budget's what, forty-four million dollars? Um, how much do we then tack onto that with warrant articles?
Well, I disagree with that. That, that's such a variable, right? I don't like that. I like the straight four percent.
Cause if you tack on that money, the amount of four percent goes up if you tack on the warrant articles, but I think it does give flexibility in going in being able to do it.
Right, I mean, I think a four percent reduction is a four percent reduction because the, what, looking at the total, right?
Yeah, yeah, so if you add that, you're adding more money by adding the warrant articles, but then that adds to the four percent.
I'm not saying we can pull that off, I'm just saying if we're gonna look at it, you know.
So if you wanna reduce four percent, that's eight thousand dollars an employee. I, I'm not saying don't do it or do do it or not, but that's what the numbers say.
We're on the town manager's office?
Yep.
Okay, moving on to the town clerk's office then. Um, so there's a three point, three point eight percent increase in salaries in the default budget, those are all contracted, correct?
Correct, and, and the new version, it, they would have been removed.
Okay, great, sorry. And some of these were developed last week?
Nope, that's fine.
Two point three now.
Two point three now, okay, thanks, Ryan. Uh, what accounts for the forty percent increase in salaries from twenty twenty-three actuals to twenty twenty-six default in the town clerk's office? And, and just to throw that out there, the town manager's office was a fifty-four percent increase from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six, and I get that we added additional staff. But then we had a forty percent increase in the town clerk's office from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six. Those are both pretty significant.
Good, Sarah.
A lot of that is CBA regulated, so they move on their steps based on the CBA that was passed.
Did we add staff in the town clerk's office in the last three years?
I know we added, um, in the last two years, one person from, um, part-time to full-time. And we still have one part-time clerk.
And then when you move someone from part-time with, who does not have benefits
Exactly.
Then they have benefits.
They become eligible for benefits?
This doesn't include benefits. This is just, uh, salaries.
Right, but to that point, you are correct. When you do move someone from part-time to, for clarification, they are eligible for benefits, um, including NHRS.
I wasn't trying to, I just wanted to be clear.
Oh. We had somebody out on FMLA last year, so they would not have been paid through the salaries, which is why the actuals is lower.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, yeah. Still, that's, yeah, and then we move somebody from part-time to regular, which is why you'll see, so the total from the budget is two ninety-three, eight fifty-nine to three twenty-four, which is moving somebody from part-time to full-time. The actuals are off because we had somebody out on FMLA.
Okay. Um, can you speak to overtime in the town clerk's office?
So the request for the increase?
Or, what is the overtime line in the town clerk's office?
So we're requesting 6,500 for that. That is to assist with the new process to comply with DOL regulations in which should somebody stay, you know, five minutes past, we have to pay them for those five minutes. We had a DOL in, we had a DOL individual come in and alert us of all that information in a not-so-friendly way.
What would cause them to stay?
The Department of Labor was given a tip, they came here and they investigated us. Someone called it in.
And what would cause overtime? Do, I assume, is there lines at?
Yeah. So they have to close out and reconcile their, I believe it's called a till, but essentially their cash register to make sure everything's there. If it takes them a little longer, if there is no, if there is an issue with the reconciliation, or if they have somebody that is there a little bit longer, which causes them to then stay a little bit longer to reconcile it, as well as they will, they're part of the election process. So when they're working over there past their initial eight hours, it's overtime. As well as should they come for, like, the rabies clinic or other items such as that, it would be considered overtime.
I think the thing you have to include is when we were going through the CBAs, we have certain groups that their hours are written into the CBAs.
Yes, so the clerks as well, their CBA, anything over eight hours is overtime. So they could, they don't, you can't have somebody work 10 hours on Monday and then six hours on Tuesday. That 10 hours, those two would be overtime.
They can't flex their time.
Correct.
Okay, I think I know the answer to this one, but you reduced the MGMT line, the management services line by 13K. We talked about that last year, that we wanted to try and get some things out of that management services line and into other places. That's why it went down because you are correcting those lines?
Correct.
Okay.
I moved that, and I'll be honest, the largest chunk I believe is in postage, which historically has been significantly overspent. It's postage as well as we do the billings. So the tax billings gets charged to management services. They charge us for envelopes and postage to send them all out. That is also being moved to the postage line, so it'll be charged to there going forward.
Ryan, you want to take those recommended reductions?
Sure. Dues and subscriptions, recommending to reduce that to $150 from 595. We didn't spend anything in 2024. Travel and mileage, we haven't spent more than 1,800, so I'm recommending bringing that down to $2,000.
So, Ryan?
Yes.
And then the answer, your, your answer about the management services going down by 13K, we were also asking why posted went up 19K. So it seems like those go together?
Yeah.
Okay. And what accounts for the 2K addition of general expense supplies to the voter registration division?
So that's one where, again, taking it from, so what I took from management services when I went through, we determined what it was, it's been historically overspent. This is, to be honest, it's general expenses because that's the best language I can come up with it, it's random expenses that occur during an election cost. The stickers, the hand sanitizer, essentially all those little things you see, we, we have to pay for, and that's essentially where we decided to put that because I didn't think it fit under office supplies and I wanted to move it out of management services. So general expenses felt more descriptive even though it's not really that descriptive.
I do have a question. What, what play did the freeze, the budget freeze come, how did the budget freeze come into play with, with these reductions as well?
So, are you talking about just last year, obviously?
Yeah.
Essentially, depending on which line you look at, every department was required to minimize any type of discretionary spending as possible to allow for that, to allow for the difference between the appropriation and what was expended. That way, shouldn't emergency have happened in May or June? We're not pushing up against the appropriation line and we have that to be able to still provide the safety services that we need without having to worry about the budget.
Would that still cause, would that cause or be the driver for some of those reductions or dips?
It likely could be, but my, I'm guessing that they're not just looking at last year. And like I said, I'll take a, yeah.
Average number three.
Yeah.
Okay.
But please keep in that in mind with everything that if you look at last year, five months, we were frozen.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Patrick.
Anything else on town clerks? Okay, finance department. We wanted to cut all the staff in the finance department.
I'm for it, let's go.
You're planning to volunteer here?
I already am volunteering.
I'm in full-time.
No.
Hey, Pat.
The last one's off the ship, no way.
Can we pivot to a department who's here? It'd be nice to get some people out of here.
Okay, fair enough. So this gets a little shorter as we get further down the line here. Well, we already talked about, we talked about the library position last week and we asked, could we make one of the part-time positions full-time instead of adding an entire full-time? Maybe I did, maybe I didn't, I don't know, I thought I did.
We did, yeah.
I thought, I thought, I'm sorry.
I thought the, hi, everybody, getting late. I thought the ask was, could the warrant article that we're requesting, which is for a full-time children's librarian, could that position be part-time instead? That was my understanding, unless I misunderstood and I apologize.
Either way, I guess it's the same difference, whether you add a part-time to handle the children's library services or whether you take one of your, your, your current staff and to make them go from, and have them, offer them to go from part-time to full-time, is that something staff members will be interested, interested in? Is that, you know, what would work better for you?
Well, to be honest?
Full-time librarian.
The full-time children's librarian.
Your plan, and I get that. What would be plan B?
Plan B could be a part-time children's librarian, to have someone dedicated in that department. We struggle with that only because it might be hard to find someone with the qualifications for a part-time position. I think a lot of people are looking for full-time right now, especially in the library field I can speak to. So I think it would be hard to fill that position. If that was what the voters want or their request and the trustees approved it, we would, of course, entertain that option.
Okay. And, and the possibility of, of taking one of your part-timers and making them full-time? Where does that fall in your preferences?
Currently, the qualifications that we would need for the children's librarian, no one on staff has those qualifications right now. It would require an MLS, which is a master's in library science, and at this time, none of my staff members have that as a part-timers.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think a part-timer who went to college and then got their masters is willing to be doing this part-time.
I would love to have someone in the library that just wants to be there. Or.
But that's not the job description, that's not the job description.
We don't know that.
Well, to be honest, everybody on my staff right now wants to be there. And I have a multitude of, I have a lot of staff members who would love to go full-time, who are part-time now. And even saying in their positions, not necessarily becoming full-time librarians per se, the professional staff, they would love to go full-time. I know that's not a possibility, but, so I have to look at what, what do I need to provide to the community to be able to continue to provide the services that we're providing? And in this case, a full-time children's librarian would be able to do that. If we, we, it's, it's going to be challenging for us to continue on the path of services and those services are programming, outreach, all of that with what we have right now. That's the struggle we have.
Erin, can I ask you a question in a different way?
Of course, of course.
I'm just looking up on here, as an example, trying to find a town planner is very hard now because a number of the colleges have stopped having degree programs in, in that area. In the library sciences area, what are you experiencing and seeing as people going into that business? I mean, I can read what you got online here, but it sounds like it's, while it's still popular, it is not as popular.
We have quite a, we, so the master's in library science, like, for our field, has changed.
Trying to find somebody.
Yeah.
How hard is it to find somebody?
It, it is challenging to find somebody, but I think we're very fortunate where Londonderry does offer a very competitive salaries and very competitive benefits where people may be looking to that. If that were to change, I think we would have the same struggle as other libraries. There are other libraries that are still struggling to fill positions that they'd have open, similar to almost fire and police for a long time. And it's just the reality, and it comes down to pay and a lot of other factors, I'm sure, for those people that are applying for those positions. But there are still people getting degrees, the jobs out there are limited, and a lot of them have to speak to the part-time, have gone to part-time because of the benefits, obviously, situation. And those positions are tough to fill because people need, obviously, full-time and they need those benefits and salaries and all of that to go along with it as prices in other areas of lifestyles do go up. Groceries, cars, all of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have a quick question. So I know in the software industry, we used to start off with people really wanted masters and then they backed away from that and they went down to bachelors and then they went down to associates. And now because the market is so starving for people to work in that, like, I've hired people without degrees that are fine, so I don't know that this is your field, I don't know the intricacies of it, but is a master's absolutely required for this? And I'm just thinking of, in order to fill the position and, and things like that, is there any flexibility in that or is that something that's absolutely must be?
So that's challenging because if you don't, if I all of a sudden say I'm going to hire a children's librarian and I'm not going to give them a masters, all the other positions in my library now look ridiculous by having masters, right? So I think it lessens the quality of that position and the quality of service that that person can provide and expertise that that person can provide if I all of a sudden say we don't need that degree.
Okay, so then it's not comparable to the others?
Right, right.
So, did you want to say something?
Go ahead.
I know that, I think you mentioned in your, your speech that you gave that you're going to cut the furniture line, right? That's maybe like.
Pathetically.
So, yeah, so that's going to be up to the trustees, that hasn't been decided yet. It's one of the things we've talked about because it's one of the things that was added when we proposed this budget. We added, I think it was $2,500.
Right, but we are responsible to oversee them too.
Of course.
Right? Like you're a separate form of government, you don't have as many checks and balances as the rest of the town. So I have seen a lot of spending that could not be spent, in my opinion. I have a whole list here, I'm not going to list them, I'm not here to publicly embarrass you, I'm just saying I've seen areas where there could be less spending.
Okay. Would, would you be able to share that with me so that I can share that with the trustees?
Definitely, I will.
Okay. Because I, I would certainly entertain those, those suggestions.
Sure.
Good with the library? Okay, thanks, Erin.
Okay, sure.
Well, let's go DPW. In, in the interest of trying to get people out of here.
Okay.
So, Dave, where are we at with making our salaries competitive with the private sector?
I'm going to, I'm going to stop you here, this is part of the CBA negotiation.
Okay. All right, then I got, I got one other.
Yeah, you know, we're doing four contracts right now? Four, actually, there's a fifth, right?
Five, yeah.
So in all of those, and you'll, the council is engaged in those conversations as part of collective bargaining and fair labor practices, we can't discuss them outside of the, outside of the negotiating team.
Question, we'll have that done, right, by?
We're trying very hard.
Okay.
Everybody has to work together.
Okay, understood.
All right, unrelated to the bargaining agreement, Dave, how much of recreation department maintenance is currently completed by DPW? Sorry to put you on the spot with questions. We heard from the recreation department, I don't know, a few weeks ago, and what was going on there, and I was curious at the time, is how much of that is done by you guys?
Maintenance for recreation?
No, I mean, like their, their fields, their facilities, are you guys doing upkeep on that stuff?
No, they handle that all themselves. As far as the, the daily stuff like lawn mowing, fertilizing, sprinkler systems and that, they handle that all themselves. Now, there are some things that come along that are a little bit, that require equipment that they don't possess, but we do. And so we will schedule, you know, within our constraints to try and get over there and assist them, like some expansion around the playground this year, and then there's been more recently a situation where everybody kind of rallied the troops to get together to help out Laffa with a unsafe dugout. So, things like that will help them with an assist, but the general operational stuff, like keeping the parks clean, things like that, no, they're, they're on their own.
I have a question on that, actually. You know, it's a pretty small budget, right, recreation? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but, I don't know, it just like, it seems like to me it's a good opportunity to almost like merge it all into one, right? You maintenance buildings, you'd also maintenance fields, I don't know what that would look like.
So I, I will share with you that there have been some discussions about future planning and some of the struggles that we have with staffing and is a little bit different in their regards that they're all part-time positions, those are hard to find. So typically, they're running with, you know, their, their average age and, you know, I'll, I'll say this with, you know, some bit of fun with it, but, you know, Art understands it too, that their staff is old, I think their average age is 68 years old. So, you know, if we don't find that demographic to fill those needs for that small pay that they pay, they have their challenges just like we do. So there's been some discussions about future planning and crossovers and could a full-time employee work in recreation, doing the mowing and the weed trimming and things of that nature, and then in the winter come and plow for highway and things of that nature? So we've been exploring that, but there's a lot that has to go into that and back and forth and job descriptions and whatnot, but we do see that as potentially something in the future that might have to be explored.
Okay, yeah, we just matured that idea, that'd be great. Maybe, I don't know, maybe, not this budget cycle, but future.
That sounds really positive. Other questions for DPW?
One of the things, I know it's CBA related, because I don't really want to talk about it too much, but I think, when I think about that and I think about your budget line for training, I don't want to get to a week prior and then think about what happens if I don't have a retention clause in my CBA. I just want to have that conversation, like, are we okay with paying salaries without retention clause? Again, CBA, I don't want.
Again, that, that is a conversation that is being handled by the negotiating team.
Okay, I'll be quiet.
Big cheers, man. It's going to turn off.
Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dave.
Who do you want to see next? Okay.
Fire?
Police department. He said fire, fire, police department, fire. Oop.
Whoever goes first.
Come on down.
Just want you to.
I am always ready to go.
Huh? Did you get the trophy yet?
Not yet, but I don't lose. It's a family thing he's asking me about, but I'll get it. Sir? What, well, the Budget Committee, what do you have for the PD?
First one I have is on the Administrative Division. There's a 15% increase on the new budget for salaries. What is that accounting for?
So Chief Bernard previously had a, is it recording secretary? No, it's.
Records clerk?
Records clerk. That we've transformed into a paralegal position, so if you look at the Support Division, you'll see a decrease in that aspect. So we moved it from Support to Administration.
Next question, Ryan, you're going to ask me is why did I do that? Right?
I'm good as long as the numbers work out, but go ahead.
So.
Ryan's a trained boy, get the hold of him.
She has plenty of reasons. She worked with me very close on this to make sure that everything would continue as they planned and that there would be no hiccups down the road regarding it.
But it's essentially, is it a wash?
Yes, we did increase headcount, so the, we had a 43-year, a 42-year employee retire. We didn't fill the position right away, what we did is we took a, we took.
And that plan was to transfer the position or the body into an administrative line, as you pointed out, Ryan, to be the paralegal. So we just changed it from one union, put it into another and repurposed the position rather than coming to you, asking you for another whole body.
As well as you have to keep in mind, the voters approved adding a prosecutor, which was also housed in that division.
Other questions for the PD?
Question, I'll risk getting pulled over.
Hey, if I pull you over, that's really bad.
I think you've pulled one person over in the past year or two.
Yeah, and they probably almost ran me off the road.
You should hear the stories about when past chiefs pull people over. It's actually pretty funny because, you know, they'll radio in and say they've just pulled somebody over. The panic goes through and every cop that's out there shows up at the scene going, "Chief, I got this, I got this."
They think as we get older, we can't do the job anymore, but we still got it, sir.
You don't need an argument from me, sir.
All right, question. To be honest, I didn't, like, I'm kind of torn on the traffic unit, right? Like, yeah, slow down, Londonderry, right? Don't curse you to a traffic safety committee that doesn't have a power to do something, right? But at the same time, we're sending money to Concord for what, right? I just like, I don't know if we can put our heads together and figure out something. I just kind of want a different alternative.
Yeah, so the approach of the traffic unit, if you would, was just that, as we talked about the first one. It was asked of us, what do we need to function? What more could be used, right? And that was one of the things that we hear from the police department is every resident in this town, and there are some behind me who have spoke vocally and quite frequently about these concerns. Everyone, we all live on our road and we all could share those concerns and complaints. And my thought was, well, after that research that we did, the 6.9 hours a week, how are we going to do any more than that? That's what we have available. And I don't say this to sound tongue-in-cheek, but I don't have other people to pull from. I'm not pulling cops out of the schools to protect our kids. I'm not pulling detectives out to stop victims from being victimized yet again by our poor planning. That ain't happening. So the only thing we do is we continue to field the complaints. We continue to put the offices out there when applicable, when we can, when staffing allows us to do that. We put them out there for five minutes, sometimes it's 15 minutes. Sometimes they don't have it that one day to be out there. So that was why that was brought up as, you know, how do you fix this? That's what I would do. If I'm asked, I'll give you the problem, I'm not sure, I mean, the solution to the problem. At this moment, if you're telling me to hold off on that, no problem, I'll figure it out.
I have a question related to that, if you don't mind, Justin. Okay, so your full staff would be, is 68?
Yep.
And we're at 63 right now?
Yep.
Okay. And so theoretically, this, these two positions for traffic safety, and I'm a proponent of it, are 69 and 70.
That could be, yeah.
What does it look like if you, if you had just hired up to 68 because we've got your lines squared away and you got, and you got interested parties and you get up to 68? How much does that traffic number go up? You said it's six hours a week. How much does that go up if we're at 68?
And that's, the point I made was that if we were to do that, we could probably do up to 80 hours a week. We'd have two officers dedicated to just traffic alone. So what we wouldn't do is if we're desperate, plug them in somewhere else. That would be their assignment. It would be like a tour. So much like days, afternoons or mids, we would take all the data from the most complaints that we get, the timeframes, and we'd utilize those two bodies to cover down on that. So anytime these complaints came in to the PD from residents or the traffic safety committee, we would put the supervisor and say, hey, could you, you know, adjust this timeframe for, you know, Team A and Team B, whatever the two officers were, to handle that. So it wouldn't be, you know, they're both riding around the car together Monday through Friday, 6 to 2. I would split them up to get the most out of the times on the road.
Okay, and then if, if we went that route, if that goes on the warrant and gets approved and you get the two additional spots specifically for that, are your next hires officers for that or are your next hires officers to continue to get up to 68?
So that's a great question too. So I think this is one of those ones where as the department head, we're able to manage the personnel that's under our discretion. And I would say that based on the severity of the complaints that we get and how often, I would immediately get those next two up and running as a priority. Because filling the rest of the open positions have been that way because the lines have been neglected for 10 years or more. So I can't hire all those people until these things are straight. But if it was to be approved by the voters in March, come July, we would have staff. I could devote two of them to that and then we would hire two more. So it's replacement, if you would, right? So if I take two people out of patrol, then they would go into traffic. I would hire two more cops. So we're always trying to maintain the staffing levels that we know that we can appropriately fund without going over, so we don't get ourselves in a jam. And this is why we've been taking this three to five-year approach with Justin on fixing it.
Agreed. Go ahead. No, go ahead, and then I'll ask my question. The, I saw on that, hold on, I gotta get my reading glasses. I saw on here the three, I'm looking at the wrong one.
You're talking about the two increased one?
Yeah, 389.9. That is not in the operating budget. Question mark.
Are you talking about the warrant article?
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, that would not be in the operating budget. That's a warrant article that needs to be approved by the voters.
Okay, cool. I just saw on your tax act.
That is, that's separate from what is in the operating budget.
Number 22 on the front. Yeah, I see it. Not very clearly, but I do see it. Anyway.
I can help you.
So question, so if we did add these two traffic officers, you know, do the numbers include, you know, cars? You know, would we need additional cars for these individuals?
We should be okay at the moment. Obviously, as you are probably well aware, we're getting a new fleet on our rotation. We also are very crafty with other vehicles that we don't have. Our cars get run 24/7 for the most part.
Yep.
But obviously detectives don't work on the overnights, as our roads don't work, you know, on the overnight. So we would just shuffle some cars around. We have two motorcycles that are part of our lease program, so we would utilize those too.
Chief, I believe your captain has a comment.
No, I think that number.
Yep, so.
That number includes one car and it includes retrofitting the motors.
That's right.
With the laptop.
Yeah, so both motorcycles would get the ability to do the MDT, which is the mobile data terminal, so they can, they can do their e-crash and their e-ticketing. And then we did add one car in.
Yep. So that number would decrease in year till, because we wouldn't be buying a car every single year.
Or we wouldn't be replacing the MDT mounts and the motors. It's a one-time, one-out cost.
I believe it also includes their uniform and equipment.
Correct.
Okay.
Because it would be potential new hires.
Okay.
Thank you for that, see? It's a good thing you have good wing people.
If I may, Mr. Goldman, you made a comment. I know we've made some jokes about stopping cars. The intent behind traffic enforcement is not to punish drivers or write tickets. We're not interested in funding the penalty assessment fee for the state of New Hampshire. The idea is that we're only dedicating 6.9 hours a week right now to a number of complaints. We want to address all these complaints. The intent here is to change driver behavior. Sometimes it's as simple as you're stopping, you know, that young kid and reminding them, hey, you gotta slow down, this is a neighborhood. So if you looked at the ratio of tickets or citations to our stops, it's not significant. We're not out there hammering people with tickets. And I don't want anybody to be afraid if they're looking at this warrant article and they're making a good decision as to whether or not they think it's appropriate. This is not to generate revenue for the state of New Hampshire, that is not our intent.
It's to educate.
It's to educate or it's our intent to, to address those concerns that are coming up through the public, through the traffic safety committee.
Okay, thank you for that, appreciate that. I have a question on your 30 mile an hour speed limit. I get that zoning, right?
Counsel.
Counsel. Can I ask a citizen question? If that's okay? Yeah, okay. I'm a map person. I like maps, I know, I'm nerd, right?
I think it's great.
I'd love to see, like, you know, to really get behind that idea, like a map of where that policy would affect. And I'll be quiet.
Yeah, so I'll give you an idea. So last time I asked, I think it was two years ago, we had five, actually, Dave, what we got, 530 something roads now in town? Something like that, right? So 20 years ago, we got hired here, it was like 300 and something. So we've added a lot more roadway and I think they all vary and that's the hard part. And that's one of the things we've been talking about, Jason, was that, you know, if it was a town-wide 30, how much, you know, it's more effective, right? Because now you're, everyone comes into towns, wherever they would come into Londonderry from, any one of our bordering towns, they would see that Londonderry is a 30 mile an hour posted speed limit, otherwise posted. So except for the state roads. I know, John, as you were the chair, this was brought up probably four or five years ago, maybe. And I think that looking at it now.
We put it to the voters and asked for a reduction in speed and it was defeated.
So this is the point, right? Like, how do you, how do you fix that? So you either enforce it, having, you know, a traffic unit or officers available, you take the town-wide approach, you whack the speed limit down. I mean, I'll stand up here all day long and tell you the same thing. It worked on high range, it's worked on Litchfield. Is it 100% perfect? No, but it's a lot better than it was.
It's a unilateral decision that can be made by the council. So if it's, if it's a town road, the council can decide to lower all town roads with the exception of state roads to whatever speed limit it is they decide.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So, not to talk for you, but to verify, so what I believe I hear you say is that with the influx of, has, with the influx of traffic, there's been an increase of complaints. So you're looking.
It's been a lot worse than it has been historically.
So you're looking at a multi-faceted, multi-pronged approach to help not just address those complaints, but to address the root of the issue. Speeding.
Correct.
You know, and lowering the speed limit is one of multiple, the traffic unit is another one of multiple steps that you feel is a solution from within your department, your control, your scope or your lane, as a, as a solution to help mitigate that.
I think it's what the citizens of this community deserve. I think they deserve to be heard on these matters. They deserve to have it enforced with their tax dollars. We just need to have both happen to work. So we need to reduce the speed in town. We can't control people coming through here, but we can control the speed limit. And if we have the officers out there to enforce these concerns that our residents have, I think we reduce risk, we reduce fatalities. Not to get off topic, but I was at a meeting last week, as the town knows, DOT, I was with Ron and Senator Carson, and DOT heard us loud and clear, thanks to these people like Senator Carson and Ron Dunn bringing this to the state level. And DOT is going to be reducing the speed limit on 102. So these are the things that, with the proactive approach and the right people being our voice and right people listening, together we can get these things fixed, so.
Do you understand that reduction on 102 was a 10-year process, took a change in legislation and took a fatal accident to get their attention?
With a kid.
That's my thought about the traffic safety. Now Kate, you've been waiting.
Yes, I had a question about the body cams. I didn't see that as one of the warrant articles on the first page of this thing that we got here. Are you not doing that this year?
So that was one of the things on my wish list, my three to five-year vision plan.
Okay.
And again, as I indicated at the last meeting, it was because it was asked of us to bring some of these things forward. And could, could I wait? Sure, I can wait. We just, we can't exhaust a grant. We tried that twice.
Yep.
So now we're here. So if you, as a, as a committee, decide that you don't want this to move forward, loud and clear, no problem. Probably have to come back next year. And I just, I don't want to overstay my welcome at the podium for asks.
I understand.
And as, as I mentioned, I think the men and women that serve your community deserve that. I think that, as I said last time, I don't want to be the one to have to explain to a spouse why we didn't have it. You know, it's an effective tool, that's an important tool and we're behind the times. Just, we're not leading in those things, that's for sure.
Yeah, it feels like good risk mitigation as well.
I think it's important to have, especially, you know, for the, for the trends in community transparency. I think if you don't have that, people are going to say, where was it? And we're going to have a whole different crew here, one night asking you guys why it wasn't approved and why we didn't do it and where is it? And then it's just, we're at that day and age in society where I think it's, it's more appropriate to have it than not.
That's one of those where we're trying to save money, it can cost us money.
I agree. That's where I was thinking too.
So, so in terms of it not being on the warrant article, I could be wrong, but I don't believe I was directly instructed to add it. If you guys want to, me to add it, it can be on there for the next one.
I would too.
I would love it.
Perfect, it'll be on the next one.
Well, we visited this four years ago and I believe it was a grant we were going to qualify for and then it.
We've, we've applied for a grant twice and we have not received it either time.
We didn't receive the funds.
If we buy the body cams, does that mean we can not apply for the grant to help with that cost down the road?
There's no grant.
There's no grant. Okay.
There's one grant at the moment that'll do up to $50,000 match, which is not, in the liberal school.
But I would not recommend putting that in the warrant article because then if we do not receive it, we don't have $50,000.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so I asked, I asked Aaron, the librarian, library director, excuse me, what Plan B was. So again, I like the idea of the two traffic officers. Would one accomplish some of the mission?
I can say that one is better than what we're currently doing. Two would be ideal. As I said last time, one hand, the one bird in the hand is better than two in a bush. I would take that and run with it and try that. What are we going to do?
So my, my thought is that the body cams are $240, something thousand a year, correct? For the next five years?
Two.
46 or something like that?
Come around there.
So if we only went with one traffic officer, and again, I'm a proponent of two, if we only went with one, does that reduce that number of 396 to 196 or, or to 200?
It would be close, closer to that number, only because we still have to outfit.
Still need a car.
Well, again, this is one of those things where, could we get by with it? We'd probably have to take one out of the, out of the line for something else, but again, the way it was proposed was to have that unit carved out.
Agreed, I'm just looking for what Plan B might be.
Plan B is I take what I'm given and I make it work.
What if it was, maybe you'd only need to outfit one motorcycle and not two?
We already, yeah, okay, I'm with you.
And, and then, and then I, then you can look into whether you need the car or not. I'm just saying, maybe we spend the 246 on the body cams and we spend half the money on the traffic units this year. And, and then we're, we're only at a, at a 445 number or 450 number.
Okay.
Instead of being at a, at a, I lost my math there.
It's a 750 number.
Yeah, instead of being a 650 number.
Okay.
And, and then, and then I, then you can look into whether you need the car or not. I'm just saying, maybe we spend the two forty-six on the body cams, and we spend half the money on the traffic units this year. And, and then we're, we're only at a, at a four forty-five number or four fifty number. Instead of being at a, at a, I lost my math there.
It's a seven fifty number.
Yeah, instead of being a six fifty number.
Okay.
So it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to bring a police officer on with nothing.
I understand. So, so let's, let's float that option.
Okay.
Give you and Justin, you know, whatever, I don't know when we meet, next two weeks, three weeks, whatever it is.
I'll meet with Justin tomorrow, we'll have it figured out by tomorrow late there.
Because then maybe, maybe you get a little bit of a win on both fronts. Maybe you get body cams.
This is what it's about, right?
And you get one traffic unit.
This is what it's about, though, Patrick, you're right. We've got to figure out solutions to these situations that we've been in for so long. And they don't, they don't get corrected overnight. And it does take some brains and some, some thought processes together to find out what's in the best interest of the community to bring this forward. And I won't sit here and say that it's disappointing, I'm not going to say that. I think you're entertaining it, you realize it's a need for the community and for the people that serve the community. I think that if that's the direction that you folks want me to go in, I captain loud and clear, got it.
And it's also what you would prefer. Would you rather have two traffic officers if we can, if that happens? Or the body cams? Or one traffic officer and the body cams?
I think it's a loaded question the first way, because the first one means I'm being selfish, and I'm looking out for the, for the, I'll use the body cams for example, right?
No, I think both, I think both scenarios are a positive for public safety and risk mitigation for us as a town. So assume that they're equal in value as far as public safety and risk mitigation. What, what would be your preference if you had to choose? And hopefully you don't.
I will take the body cams and I'll take the one officer.
Sold.
Right, I mean, I don't want to have to choose.
Get pulled over half the time.
Right, I don't want to have to choose. Do I, do I take care of a community need that I know was needed now? And, or do I not give the officers the protection and the risk mitigation or liability by saying no to that? And, I mean, I'm going to pick the safety of the officers, but at the same time, I know how important this is to the community. And we got to address this from a budget, budget committee standpoint, the town council, finance. There's no other way to go about doing it. Like, we, we can't just write a check and make it happen. Like, we got to go through the steps, and that's why, you know, we're here collectively, all of us, to figure these things out.
I'm good.
Well, I, I would think that the secondary question you'd have to ask is, is you'd have to ask Primex, and you'd have to ask our legal counsel. You know, what is, what's, what's more fiscally protection, what's the more fiscal protection for the town? I don't know the answer to that, but I think you'd probably have to ask them that.
Was that about the camera?
Insurance rates.
Gotcha, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what does, what does that mean, and probably would be advisable to ask legal counsel?
If you had a choice between a motorcycle versus car? I mean, we live in New England, motorcycles are fifty percent of the year. Are they a beneficial tool in your arsenal?
Extremely beneficial, and to your point, yeah, we don't use them year round. We have a great program, I don't want to, you know, jinx it, but we have two motorcycles that we lease. So when those get to their lease end agreement, they go back, we get two new ones. Motorcycles, if you don't ride them a lot, I don't ride a motorcycle anymore, I'm good. But I can tell you that those things, they get expensive. Officers go through clutches, they go through a lot of brakes, a lot of tires. Those things get ridden pretty hard. They're an effective tool, because obviously they can get into places that cruisers can't. We use them a lot for, obviously, like parades, we use them a lot for specialty assignments, too. So those things get their money's worth from a community and/or PD standpoint. Very beneficial.
I'm curious to see how, how much ground you expect to cover within the eighty hours filled by two additional officers versus what we currently cover now with that, you know, six point nine hours? Just so that when we're taking a look, you know, it's not at positions and, you know, is it one officer and body cams? Or two officers and body cams, or no additional officers and body cams? I'm curious to see what you'd be able to accomplish with these two officers that you're asking for? Because I'd like to take a look at more than just a number, but what?
I think what he's trying to get is, you have a guy who's been running a lot of analytics. Would you be able to bring him in at some point, so that we can get a better understanding upon how much more you're able to accomplish?
Oh, I think, I think that's an easy one. You know, we're devoting six point nine hours a week. And if we have two, we're going to be up to eighty hours a week. Now, when I say up to eighty, it's not people who have a sick day, people who go to training, so they may not be out there all the time. But the point is, we'd be covering up to eighty hours a week, work week, Monday through Friday type of thing, out there during the commuter time. And I think that those numbers would be, you know, if we came back here in, in two years, three years tops, I think we would see some, some pretty significant cost justification. And the results would be, what would be there, I'd imagine. I don't see how you couldn't, unless we were complete fools, we didn't utilize and put the right people in those positions. There's a lot of terminology in police work, ROD, retired on duty. Have you ever heard that before? Okay, see, we don't tolerate that. So I wouldn't have someone who's ROD taking that assignment, who's going to stop one car a day. We would put the right people in place that are motivated and realize this is a brand-new program the community asked for. They're going to be out there and they're going to be performing. Because if not, the division commanders would be fixing that assignment. And we would, obviously, we vet these things like we do when we select someone to be a DRE, or an FTO, or on the SWAT team. They all get vetted to fit their areas of expertise. So we would have some high chargers in that area to get out there and hear the concerns of the community.
So, Jason?
Jason, sorry, did I, did I already call you?
It's okay, I forgive you. I, I think so, to summarize what you're saying, we're at six hours, we'll get to forty-six-ish, right? We'll have more coverage. I think there's always going to be an opportunity to scale up later. I think, I think see what we need, and then for a year, and then go from there.
Agreed. I think that the, again, I'm a proponent of two. However, I think that if we go with one now, which hopefully helps some of the budget constraints that we're trying to work under, it's going to be an easy sell in the future when you have the data to show what that one traffic officer is accomplishing.
Yeah, totally.
It's great, both are, both are well, well pointed out and well stated. I take my direction from you folks. It's that easy. If that's how you guys feel the most comfortable as a body, and if it goes to the voters and they feel the same way, we'll, we'll make it work. And we'll come back to you with a product and see where it goes.
Yeah, and if possible, you know, something that could either be emailed to us, or something physical, tangible that we can see, showing, you know, what we're accomplishing now, what you could possibly accomplish with the, with the two officer and then the one additional officer. I asked for the same thing when the fire department was asking for more personnel.
It shouldn't be hard to get you, I think we already have that.
That would be phenomenal, I just, I like to see it and
No problem.
And then be able to move from there.
And Chief, I'd like to just say that, as Sean said earlier, I received phone calls all week, last week. And I didn't receive one person that said they didn't want two traffic officers, just to let you know.
Well, thank you.
Every single person I spoke to wants two people on the, on the beat, on the traffic. So just, just so you know, I'm a big proponent of it. And even people that were complaining about our budget increases, they want this. So I think you're going to see the voters vote for it.
As you know, from being in that meeting at the State House with DOT, this is not just a Londonderry problem, this is everywhere. How else do you fix it?
Right.
And it'd be good, I hope some of those same people speak, reach out to you guys on their opinion of one versus two.
I just think the overall response for two has been outstanding, like, from the community. Because the amount of complaints that I get anyway about speed is, is quite an amount, quite a lot. Especially on West Road, so.
Come to the Traffic Safety Committee, you'll hear them there all the time.
Now Chief, now Chief, I have a separate question regarding regarding our body cams and the comment that you're proposing to go through. Would it be worth reaching out to them to see if we did a larger one-time payment to them for a reduction on the total program?
I believe we, didn't we try that with them? Or that was a Taser, too?
We attempted that with a Taser, and their, their pricing model is a pricing model. So we, we tried to sweeten it the best we could, especially leveraging some of our resources at the time.
Tim, what I think he's saying is similar, or not similar, but essentially use it as like a down payment, so that way that two forty-six, on an annual basis, we're still paying it, but it's no longer two fifty-six, it's now
They'll, they will do that. They, it won't change the bottom line number.
Right, so we'll still have a total of about one point two three three million. But depending on if you decide to use UFB, the lease payment for the five years will decrease similar to a car down payment.
Right, so for example, if we did use a bit of UFB money on that, then our future year payments would be reduced.
Correct. But again, the bottom line number's not going to change.
Right, and I don't think
We did attempt that with the Tasers.
Right, and I don't think using UFB, you know, continuously every year on this, I, DRA-wise, might not be appropriate, but on a one-time payment, could make more sense on a long-term on that.
If we're not paying interest on, to this company for, for this lease agreement, for the body cams or whatever, right? Whereas we're making interest on the money that's in the undesignated fund.
Correct.
So Ted, potentially, no, sorry Ted, but I think if we use the money from the undesignated fund balance to pay this bill, that's not really saving anything.
Justin, how much money do we have in the undesignated fund balance?
We currently have seven point eight million.
So approximately eight million dollars.
Yeah.
How much interest do you get on our, what's the interest rate you get on our investments?
Between three and four percent, depending on the CD term, as well as depending on which bank I'm
Cent's three hundred and twenty thousand.
It's likely going to be decreasing with the upcoming cuts, but I'd say about three point five is a safe estimate.
So three hundred thousand dollars we get in interest off the undesignated fund balance? More or less? Okay. But keep a good balance right now.
It is, yes, that makes sense. No, just looking at different options.
Just throwing it out there.
Of course.
The body cams would be a warrant article, or would that be in the proposed budget?
That would be a warrant article.
Would the warrant article have to state the full cost over the five years, or would it just state the one-year payment?
It would be similar to what we did last year, where it is the life of it, but the actual cost is the one-year payment. And it would say, it's, honestly, it would be very similar to the vehicles, is probably the best way to put it. Where it says the total, but then it says what the tax impact is.
Go ahead, Jason.
Not for them, actually, I have a question for council. What do you need from the Budget Committee? Do you want us to vote to advise you? Again, I'm, I'm one guy, you know, you heard my opinion. I just don't want to represent the entire Budget Committee. And there's other opinions.
I think the dialogue is healthy. I think that, you know, it invokes thought. And at the end of the day, you know, the council in partnership with the Budget Committee and the department heads and the town, and finance and everyone else, will move forward on, on the best process. So I think what you're doing right now is fine.
Okay, no issues, okay.
And I'm one of five.
Let me be more specific. What I meant earlier by saying is, is that I would like to see you go to your meeting and come back with something similar to what we did. What we did was, is we came back and we said, okay, community, this is what we're presenting. This is what we think is, is the, you know, the need for the, for the community. I like, you know, people put out a citizens petition last year and wanted the Budget Committee to put the whole budget together. What I'd like to see is, is I'd like to see what you would do if you had to put the budget together.
Well, that's what we're doing. We already have a list of questions and are working on, and are working on them. And that's traditionally what we've done, is we come up with a list, and we address those questions at these meetings. Obviously, we'll talk at our meeting on Thursday as well. But that's pretty much what's happening.
I take that point. I, I'm just trying to be responsive, right? Like, so
Well, I wasn't responding to you, Jason, I was responding to
No, 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 to John. Like, right, so he's looking for us to make our own idea, right?
Come back and say, you know what? You're, you're all wet. We can do this for eight million dollars, we don't need forty-four million. I mean, I'm, I'm making that up, obviously. Or come back and say, you know what? We've listened to the needs and, you know, you all need a twenty-five percent increase, and please, make sure you guys say it now. But, but come back with something that says, okay, this is, this is our position. Great that you're asking questions, but what's your position?
Yeah, exactly.
And that's what I'm asking you, and that's what I'm asking for.
That's not as easy as it sounds. There are five of you, and it's hard, it's hard for you to come up with a collective position. Take seven of us and try and come up with a collective position, that really doesn't work all that well.
But that's what they elect us to do.
That's why, that's why we vote before the town meeting day, so that, so that our recommendations are on the ballot. We don't have to come up with a seven-person collective agreement on something. We just continue the discussion.
That's why I was trying to throw a guideline at it, because I thought just doing a general come back with something with seven different opinions, you couldn't throw, come back with something on us and we'd be able to do it, so hey.
I think in our meeting this upcoming Thursday, there might be one or two different consensuses coming from us on the committee of where we want to go. Either one line of, let's make some changes, let's make some reductions, and another, let's give some, give some money. So I'll be interested to see after, you know, I want to be able to sit and marinate off from the past couple budget meetings for our upcoming meeting on Thursday, and come in with some, with some different ideas that we can discuss amongst ourselves to bring forward in December.
That's, you know, that's my point. Like, I think we, again, need to vote on it as committee, and make a formal position of, hey, Budget Committee advises the Town Council, do X. That's it.
I'll give you an example. Before we head to SP two, what would happen in these meetings is, is the Town Council would turn to the Town Manager and go, two percent reduction across the board, go take it. Come back and tell us what that is. And the Town Manager at that time would go off, and he would say, you take two percent off of every single person's budget, with no rhyme or reason to it. Everybody has to give up two percent. And then that's, that's what they would come back with. If you want to get rid of four percent, one point six million dollars, are you going to take four percent off of everybody's line item? You know? We're asking the staff to go back and figure out what they're going to reduce by four percent. What's your recommendation? Is four percent the right number? Is it one percent? Is it go up by three percent? People in the community made it clear that, you know, they want to hear more from the Budget Committee. What I'm saying to you is, is come back and tell us, you know, what do you, what do you want to do? I'm not trying to make it difficult where that you all have to agree about it, you can, it can be four-three.
I don't think that the statement last year with the citizens petition was a statement that they wanted to hear more from the Budget Committee. I think that the Budget Committee was very involved in the process last year. And some of that is a credit to you, John, that, that when warrant articles were discussed, and the Town Council was getting ready to vote on whether a warrant article would go to the ballot, you asked and solicited the Budget Committee's opinion in those meetings, and we weighed in on those, on those articles. And I feel like collectively, Town Council and Budget Committee shaped those articles that went to the ballot last year. And I thought that process went well. I don't think it was as smooth the year before. And so I do feel like we are involved in the conversation, and we're influenced. And as you can see tonight, we're influencing what the warrant articles might be through these conversations.
I, I think it's nice when there's consensus, right? But otherwise, if there's not consensus, if you're split, right? What am I supposed to say? Well, how, how are they supposed to take that?
Well, that's why, that's why on the breakdown on, when you guys do vote, for people see that and make a decision based on, okay, you know, and when I was on the Budget Committee, and I'm sure other members of the council who were on as well, why, we were asked during deliberative, why did you vote in favor? Why did you vote against it? And, and at a, and not just at your meeting, not just at a budget workshop, you articulate your why, in pro or against, you know, for or against. And, and I think that does matter, when, when the voters go into the, into the voter booth.
So let me rephrase. What I'm really saying to you is, is I'm out of ideas. Really looking for more. I'm without, you know, that's really what I'm looking for at the end of the day. Is I, I don't have any ideas where else to go with this. Because we've, we, as we said, the tax burden's five point four percent, we run pretty lean.
Agreed.
Justin, I have a question for you. With our governmental system with the DRA, can we just arbitrarily cut four percent? Okay, I just want to make sure what we can or cannot do.
The only time, four percent, yeah, the only time that you're not able to cut is at deliberative, you can't cut more than ten percent. Outside of that, you also can't add more than ten percent at deliberative. Out of, out of that, you can, yes.
So this conversation all started because of what Governor Chris Nunu had stated the other day. Now, mind you, they are accomplishing this mostly by cutting out positions that are not being filled right now. And they have even said out there in multiple different departments that these are positions that have not been filled for years. And there's tens, twenties, thirties of positions in each department that they have never been able to fill. But yet they are budgeted for those positions. So I don't think that going off of what the governor wants for the state, when they are actually maybe able to accomplish what they want to do by cutting out budgets for positions that have never been filled, is really responsible on us as good stewards of the town and our employees.
Is two dollars on the tax rate responsible?
I don't think, I don't think anybody's suggesting that.
I mean, no, I know, but I'm saying, in the same token, because no one was suggesting that, no one's suggesting this either. We're going through the exercise to see, we've had plenty of citizens come and come up to the mic and say that they'd like to see some, you know, something to help their tax rate. They're struggling, and they want an answer. And so in the same method, I just want to show them what that would look like, what kind of services that would degrade. And go, this is what that looks like, because they saw two dollars on the tax rate, this is what you get for it, and that's how much that costs. I'd like them to see it the other way, too.
Are we going with
I completely agree with that. That's a hundred percent, I agree.
Now, Justin, how much of our tax rate would go up if we just went off of the general budget? Of what, you know, the new proposed budget is?
So that's, that's difficult to answer, because this year's tax rate has not been set yet.
It has not been set.
I'm waiting, they're finalizing our, the final form. So any, any calculation we do will be based on twenty-three, so you're looking at a two-year increase rather than just a one-year. So I'm not able to give you that answer.
So when I was doing the numbers and everything else, it was fifty-four cents when we, before we took the two hundred and eighty-five thousand out. So you take the two hundred and eighty-four thousand out, that reduces it by four to five cents, you're looking at right around fifty cents. Just the way we sit at the
So not the two dollars? The two dollars would be if, if everything was actually put in.
Yeah, so the, the stuff before, and I wrote this down, was fifty-four cents before the line. The stuff I called frosting after the line was a dollar ninety-four was the tax rate, and so I wrote this down.
That's correct.
That's correct, and none of that is included, or most of those items are not included in the proposed
But we went through the exercise, we went through the exercise of each of those, and we went through it over two sessions.
Right, but just to be clear, the, what's in the budget in front of you?
It's not, I understand that.
Yeah. What Sean's saying is, is, and, and kind of what I'm saying to the Budget Committee is, is if we cut one point six million, what does that do to essential services? Period.
So
Eighty percent is salaries and benefits.
Sorry. All good. And would that's something that you'd be able to have prepared for us fire meeting this Thursday, or?
Oh, no, no. No, I, I, usually I'll say I'll try my best, that one, I got to be honest, no, no.
The quick back, the napkin math that I just did, if this is correct, if it's one point six million that we're trying to cut from the budget, and it's sixty-five, sixty-two thousand five hundred and it's sixty five, sixty two thousand five hundred for every one cent, we're looking at twenty five cents on the tax rate, which is about ten dollars and sixty six cents a month per household is what we're looking at cutting from the budget.
But I definitely think that that one point six million or whatever that number is, one point seven million cuts into services.
Yes.
So one thing I do want to say is it's going to be very difficult to get to that level without personnel being one of the items. I will try my absolute best, but.
You're not going to get there without cutting.
Exactly. It's you're not going to be able to operate at that point.
Sean is just asking for a proposal. He's not suggesting it. He's just asking for a proposal.
I'm not saying he is.
Other people.
I'm asked for.
You know, other people ask for a hundred thousand dollars. He's just asking for that. It's all he's asking for.
Again, I'm not saying he is. I just want to be upfront so we are aware that.
He's not saying he's going to do it. He's just asking for it.
Again, I'm not saying he is, but similar to always, I just want to make sure we're all aware that it's going to be very difficult without that. I will do my absolute best to avoid that, but I may not come back with four percent. And it may be that that's why. If that's okay, I'd rather give you guys that than.
I think the voters would like to see that.
Yeah. If you guys are good with that, where it's we can do this without personnel aspects.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
The goal will be four percent.
Yeah.
But I I'm telling you right now, I can't promise that without getting that. It's going to be difficult, but I'll try my best to do that.
No, I just appreciate the exercise.
Chief, do you have something first or?
I didn't know if you had anything for me.
Oh, no, 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 no. So just to just to address what John said is.
We're good.
We get to let him go.
Okay. Just want my homework assignment. Sir, you asked me for what one cop and and all the fixins would be for a number?
Sure.
Okay.
With body worn cameras.
Yeah. Okay, we'll get that. And then Joe, you asked me for the traffic data. I gave you that.
Yep.
Anybody else need anything else?
You guys are good.
Okay, if you guys ask me to cut forty four thousand for my budget, oh, boy.
So, yeah, so just to address what John said is like eighty percent.
Can we have one at a time, please?
Yes. Eighty percent is, you know, of course, individuals. So if you're looking at forty five million dollars, that's thirty six million for the individuals that work here. So you're down to nine million. So we're trying to take what, one point six out of nine? That gets difficult.
Yeah.
It's an exercise. That's all he's asking.
Yeah.
It's it's not cast in stone. He's just asking for something to be done.
When's the next budget workshop, Mr. Chair?
Two weeks.
December. December second.
Yeah, so plenty of time.
So I feel like we've covered quite a few departments tonight. And maybe we should pick up and talk to fire on December second.
Okay.
Can I finish up with two police questions?
Sure.
Oh.
I'm good. I don't I don't need, I don't need chief. I think I think Justin can answer.
What do we got?
Uniformed officers, there was a forty one, forty one percent increase in overtime in the default budget.
Yes.
How do how do we get a forty one percent increase in overtime in a default?
Um, with everything that's going on, we redid how we calculate default for the overtime for public safety. So historically, we would take prior year's budget and apply any percentage increase that would be part of the contracts. We then would take the amount spent for on average over the past five years. And then we would take what the average overtime rate is for the personnel for the next year times the average hours that were used over the past five years. This year, we did the average of three years overtime that is spent or that overtime hours that have been gone as well as the average overtime for the personnel next year.
And training.
And he's looking at just the overtime line now.
Everyone's rate also goes up.
Yes.
Because they're in a negotiated C B A that's in effect. So everyone gets their their increase and raise, which means their overtime rate has now also increased.
Sure, sure. That I'd expect that. And and you've seen over the last three prior years, six point six, five percent, five, six point eight percent increases in in overtime, forty one percent seems.
So again, that's taking three years of average, it's taking the past three years of overtime hours.
So I guess I guess I'm confused on how how that can be, how that can impact default. I understand your change of methodology and your proposed budget, but how do you, how can you work that into default?
The the argument is we're contractually obligated to fill those positions and the best way that we can average it out is doing that.
Okay.
If you'd like me to go back to the old way, I'm willing to because it acted as a cap, but it will result in a significantly decrease.
Well, seeing the calculation might be helpful.
See that, too.
And then.
Get that for you right now.
Ryan, a lot of it has to do with like the minimum staffing requirements that we must fill. A lot of times when we have, if the staffing is four or five in one, somebody calls us sick or a vacation day, most of the time we won't fill it. So try to keep that line down. But if we're at that minimum staffing, then we have to fill it. We fill with sergeants, patrol officers, detectives down, S R Os down.
Yeah, so I think I think similar to the fire conversation, we're budgeting full staff. If we're also budgeting higher overtime for the inevitability of being short staffed, we're kind of double counting in the budget.
I see where you could see that. But however, if, for example, if we're budgeted for sixty eight and we reduce that and then I staff up, then I can't fulfill those obligations that I'm required to do because now that number has dropped. I'm going to go over budget. We're going to be here next year with a whole different problem. So we can't fill up because of those lines. We have to be appropriate with what shifts we fill when people go out with workers comp or F N L A or vacations, all those things.
What's your minimum?
What's that?
What's your minimum staff?
Staffing depends what shift and what location. We're talking town side or airport.
Well, airports covered, so I don't care about that.
They're all they're all different. So minimum staffing, I don't love advertising this because it's kind of embarrassing. But if you want me to tell you, three, four and three, so three on days, four on afternoons and three on mids.
And what what's your budgeted staffing?
Budgeted staffing is for sixty eight.
So.
That that includes command staff, et cetera.
Okay.
Do you have a second question or?
So.
Just just for next time or in the.
I can tell you right now, I have it up. So for U O D, just U O day, we budgeted the average, three year average was twelve thousand eight hundred thirty, thirty hours point nine two. The average overtime rate for those individuals in that category is sixty four dollars and thirty six cents, which is where you get to the eight hundred and twenty five thousand.
Okay. Yeah, again, if you can send me the calculation, that'd be helpful.
Yep.
And then just for next time, management services going up twenty three percent in in.
Is it I T?
In in I T, yeah.
Yep. I have that calculation as well. That was from their public safety I T coordinator. And it's essentially all the contracts we have for management services.
It's kind of.
Yep.
A lot.
Well, it's that that fund you have to keep in mind has also been underfunded where we're trying to get it back in slowly to where it should be. So I believe if you look, it's likely been overspent the past several years.
Okay.
Um, I could be wrong on that, but I that's what I figured. It's been overspent historically. On that, so this is to kind of put it all rather than doing it all at once to the taxpayers. It's one of those, again, three to five years to try to right size it rather than put it all on at once.
And the I T director at the P D had also asked that all of his lines be put into or all of the funds be put into management services, including phone and all the P D services. So you'll see that nothing is budgeted.
I assumed that was the case.
Yeah. And then he has a list of all of his contracts that he has for I T software and how much it costs. So it's not an arbitrary number.
Licensing fees?
Yes, yep.
I believe that just, yeah.
Yeah, I can get that for real. I'll email that off to you.
Thank you.
All right, so just.
So another number for you guys to keep in mind as you're looking at this four percent decreases is I, there's another project that we've been working on around healthcare costs. The total, what we pay for medical healthcare costs right now is five point seven million dollars. It's going up eleven point six percent. That's six hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. So when you're looking at the lines.
And that's on top of a nineteen percent increase a couple of years ago?
That's right. So when you're saying reduced by, the only way you get there is is as Justin so candidly pointed out was is you you start looking at headcount because that affects all lines. But that's a big part of the increase we're looking at this year is the is the medical healthcare line.
I had one other question I had tasked you guys with, and it's regarding the telephone line item. I wasn't sure if you guys in I T were able to look further into the option I had suggested.
So we had I T look into it and one of the items we had discussed is essentially when it comes to the public safety buildings, police, fire, without flat out saying no, the answer is going to be no because we need to make sure that essentially a five second delay in it coming could be life or death in those situations. Um, in terms of the, you know, town hall, library, senior center, cable, we're looking further into that.
Okay.
And looking at essentially a cost benefit analysis versus what we've already put into the infrastructure and walking away from versus what we'd be saving in terms of switching over.
Okay.
But we are looking into that. But as I just figured, I'd flat out say in terms of public safety, that that five seconds is is huge.
Oh, agreed. I completely agree.
All right, so if I heard you correctly, you're asking to pause on the rest of the discussion for the other department heads and continue on the second. You also have your meeting this Thursday.
Yes.
Uh, at seven P M. Here, where you guys can discuss further.
Yes.
All right. So at that time, you guys are all, you're saying you guys are all set for the budget workshop. We can close the workshop.
I think we continue it on December second.
All right.
Otherwise, we're going to be, because if we start the conversation about fire, I feel like we're going to be every another hour.
All right. Well, thank you for that. So you guys can stay or go.
Let's step in sunny crust real quick, budget committee.
Uh, I don't know if you can do that. I don't think you can do that.
I can't do that.
Nope, sorry.
I'll send you guys something about the community services grants tomorrow. I just have to get, I just have to speak to Justin after the meeting about one thing. And you'll have the community service grant applications tomorrow to to be discussed on Thursday to make our decisions on them. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
You're good.
I, Patrick, I sent them to everybody.
Oh, you sent them to everybody?
Yes.
All right, disregard that last.
All right, uh, moving on. Give me a second. Approval of minutes.
Motion to approve minutes from November twelfth, twenty twenty four.
I I have some. I have some things to add and subtract from the minutes.
Ament?
Ament, sorry, yes, amend.
My apologies. Mr. Chair, could we just wait since I'm going to need to write this down?
Yeah.
Just can we wait a minute till I can hear? Thank you.
You're good, Chairson. Thank you. All right, we good?
Yeah, I can hear you. Thank you.
All right, on line one fifty two.
One fifty two?
One fifty two. The council didn't discuss the town staff being stretched. That was Dave Waller that discussed that. We, as a council, discussed volunteers being used for the lights. Secondly, I want to add in there that councillor Dunn disagreed with spending eleven thousand dollars on the Christmas lights. And I also want to add in there that the council had a majority vote in favor of the holiday lights. There was never a vote taken, but there was a majority.
Right, yeah, I think it was more of a consensus.
Consensus, okay.
So change, change one fifty two, your your suggested amendment is to change one fifty two to reflect what you said regarding the council agreed that the town staff changed that to.
That was Dave Waller that discussed the town staff. We discussed volunteers being used.
And then your second amendment would be to.
Adding in that I disagree with spending the eleven thousand dollars on the Christmas lights.
Okay.
And then adding in that the council had a majority vote in favor of the holiday lights.
All right, you got that, Chairson?
Yes. Are you comfortable with me reviewing the video just to make sure I get that in in?
Absolutely.
For discussion? Okay.
Hundred percent.
All right.
So should we wait till next week to approve them then?
We can.
Thank you for doing that.
All right, liaison reports.
We need to take a vote. Do we need the motion to approve with the edits?
No, we're going to table it till the next council meeting.
I just want to make sure I get it in the accurate location.
Yeah, and there's no statutory.
There's no legal requirement to approve to approve minutes whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. Uh, liaison liaison reports.
Did we ever vote to come out of public hearing?
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you. I met with Ted Kitchens, great conversation. He's a great airport director. We met for, you know, about twenty minutes or so. A lot of good things happening at the airport. So fun to meet with Ted.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, there was a, quite a planning board meeting last Wednesday with two conceptuals for Woodmont. One with housing, one with industrial life science and as well further conversation with developing and relooking at heritage commission upon what exactly is their task and falls within their bylaws and as well looking at our R S As and as well what has changed within our planning charter items to make sure that it actually fits with their bylaws of their charter. So I think it'll be interesting moving forward with the two groups.
Sean, do you have anything to add to that in the liaison?
Um, no, he covered it pretty well.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Uh, school board budget, their rollout for the, their first workshop is going to be the twenty sixth of this month at seven P M. Hence, reason why I had requested a six thirty meeting for us. So that's it for us. This is the town manager report.
Also, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Folks, next meeting, actually, before I close, are there any other comments from anyone before we close?
One quick thing, I didn't want to interrupt the budget process earlier. The Lunardi Police Association reached out and they're going to make a five hundred dollar donation for Christmas lights with a comment.
I also received a text. I heard Home Depot donated everything, all the Christmas lights.
That's not, they didn't say everything.
Okay, my apologies. Thank you.
So I have the, I have the the actual text.
Thank you.
Um, they said, here, they, so just, they said, um, a good portion.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. No, great.
Not to rain on their parade.
Yep. Nope, thank you very much.
Actually, they donated all the lumber for the nativity scene when that was built by some volunteers.
And thank you for the police association as well.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, next meeting, next meetings are December second at seven P M. November twenty, I'm sorry, let me back up. November twenty sixth at six thirty P M. November, December second at seven P M. December sixteenth at seven P M. All here. Uh, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you. Good evening, folks.